Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting, September 27, 2021. Please join Vice Mayor Hampton, the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, thank you, Lord, for today, for our great city, and all the residents in the city as well, Lord. I just thank you for blessing this city with the jobs, growth, amenities, and just a great place to raise a family, Lord. I pray for those that were injured in the train wreck in Montana, and also for those that are still dealing with COVID in and around our communities and our country. I thank you for the staff. I thank you for our fire department, our police department, and thank you for our military that are serving us here and abroad, Lord, for their sacrifices as well. I pray for wisdom, Lord, for as we're making decisions tonight and throughout our terms, Lord, just help us make wise decisions for our residents and for the city and for the future of Goodyear, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for loving us, and your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, now is the time for citizen who would like to address the council on any non-agenda item. That is a non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of Goodyear. City Clerk, do we have non-agenda items?
Mayor, just give me one second to just double check. Mayor, we have none for non-agenda items.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Then let's go right to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items one through 10 only?
Number one, approval of minutes. Number two, recommend approval of a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Old Chicago Pizza and Taproom located at 1828 North Litchfield Road, Goodyear, Arizona, 85395. Number three, approve the expenditure of up to $675,000 for the purchase of a new centrifuge to replace an existing unit at the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility. Number four, approve an agreement with Buckeye Water Conservation and Drainage District, BWCCDD, for improvements and discharge to the canal and related budget transfers. Number five, approve expenditure of $2,858,184 for nitrate treatment improvements at Site 18. Number six, approve the preliminary plat for La Privada Parcels 3 and 7, subject to stipulations, and grant the city engineer the ability to modify stipulations. Number seven, approval and authorization to execute the termination of irrigation delivery service, termination of tailwater collection, and partial release and restatement of easement associated with the Roosevelt Irrigation Easement and Irrigation Services on the Recreation Campus property. Number eight, acceptance of a public utility easement associated with the South Cinderos Drive Phase 2 within Estrella Mountain Ranch. Number nine, adopt Resolution Number 2021-2181, agreeing to the settlement and dismissal of the appeal the City of Goodyear filed challenging the terms of AZPDES Permit Number AZ0022357, providing authorization and effective date. And number 10, approve the budget transfers.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council wish to, I, from this consent agenda? All right, then, I need a motion, a second, through items one through 10. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Hampton and a second from Councilman Campbell. Let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. All right, there are three public hearings on the agenda tonight. And so I just want to, before we start and before I open the meeting, you saw what the introduction was on behavior at a council meeting. And so I just want to emphasize those. If they're shouting, clapping, yelling, standing up, raising your hand, anything that disrupts this meeting, I will excuse you to the hallway. And then we'll call you one by one. First of all, I appreciate that you're here. You have a right to be here. But I want it orderly, and I want to be able to understand it. So if by the guideline that we can ask you a question or we can make a response, that that's, we can do that and do it well. So I know at planning and zoning, you were excited. I understand why you're coming here because we all have different opinions on different things throughout the city. And this is one of yours. So good for you for being good citizen. But good for me because I don't take any disruption in the room. I want it quiet so you can say what you want to say and that we hear what you want to say. Okay, so we're open the public, did I open the public hearing yet?
Not yet.
Thank you, open the public hearing. And so we're going to start out with Christian Williams, planner. So if I didn't say that, the hearing item requests rezone approximately 40 acres from R1-6 Single Family to MF-12 and MF-24 for Cotton Commons. All right, welcome, Christian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here before you this evening with a request from Wendy Riddell to conduct a rezoning on a property within the city. The property is located in the central part of our city, and it is in an area west of Cotton Lane that we refer to as West Goodyear. It is approximately 40 acres, and it is located at the southwest corner of 173rd Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road. The property is currently zoned R1-6. For reference, this is the 40 acres that we're referring to today. So this is Lower Buckeye Road, and this is future 303 Cotton Lane. Zooming in a little closer, you can see that the property is located west of the City of Goodyear's well site, number 12, north of the El Cidro Development's open space corridor. It is west of a future, I apologize, it's east of a future Alphria Union High School District site, and it is south of the future La Jolla Vista Development. So again, this is the site we're talking about today here in the pink area. As it relates to the general plan land use, this project falls within the neighborhoods area. This is a similar category to that of apartment complexes such as the Encantada at Canyon Trails or Sarafina and Lunaire over in the Centerra area. For a little bit of history on the property, the project was initially zoned R1-6 Single Family Residential as part of a project called Cotton Commons back in 2005. Since 2005, the Arizona State Route 303 Loop Freeway route has become more clear as it will head south along Cotton Lane, and it will begin to head southwest towards the future State Route 30 Tres Reals Freeway once it extends south of Lower Buckeye Road. The SR303 and Cotton Lane frontage roads will be located approximately one quarter of a mile to the east of Cotton Commons. That is this location right here. The SR30 and the State Route 303 interchange that is planned is planned to be located one and a half miles to the southwest. So if I take us to this map here, you'll see that the project is here. This is the future SR303, and it will head to the southwest. My mouse just went out, I apologize. Will head to the southwest and intersect with the future SR30 about a mile and a half to the southwest of here. Today's proposal requests to zone the property, the western half of the property to MF-24 Multifamily and the eastern portion of the property to MF-12 Multifamily. We will get more in depth on that proposal on the next slide. As it relates to other multifamily in the area of Goodyear between McDowell Road on the north and the future SR30 on the south, Perryville to the west and Buller to the east, there are eight established multifamily communities. Those are shown in orange. So some of those, I mentioned Encantada here, Sarafina and Lunaire over here, just for some reference. There are seven under development or recently completed, and those are shown in purple. I'll talk about a few of those here in a minute. And there are 14 zoned for multifamily. Six of those will likely be single-family rentals or townhouse style. Six are likely to be garden-style, and two are in the city center area, which will likely require a rezon. There are seven projects you will likely see in the future, and those are shown in blue. The closest single-family rental-type product under construction is Arable Vistas, and that is located one mile to the southeast. That is this purple area right here. You can see the subject property tonight's right here. So Arable Vistas is located here. And then the closest garden-style apartment to date is Encantada Canyon Trails. That's about 3.1 miles to the northeast. That is up here. The applicant requests to rezon the eastern half of the property, or roughly 19.18 acres, to MF-12, commonly referred to as single-family rentals, and the western half, 20.95 acres, to MF-24. That's typically a garden-style product. In addition, stipulations have been added to address continuity with the surrounding area, colors, aesthetics, and to provide more diversity in product offering. The images on the right is conceptual in nature, but it shows you how they might achieve a site plan that includes half MF-12s and half MF-24s. So this is Lower Buckeye Road, 173rd Avenue alignment, 175th Avenue alignment. You can see the MF-24s on this side and the MF-12s on this side. Development within the MF-24 parcel, which is the west half, will include color schemes that add visual interest and variation to the buildings on the site. They will need to use at least two base colors and three accent colors, and materials shall be used throughout the site. The combination of the base colors and accent colors and materials shall be used in a manner which creates a minimum of four unique building schemes throughout the site. The color palette that also must incorporate colors that are not simply just shades of grays and browns, and a variation of height is required. The MF-12 product on the east shall have vibrant colors, not just grays. A West Goodyear Monument sign will be located at the southwest corner of 173rd Avenue and Lower Buckeye as this is a gateway into the West Goodyear area. It will also incorporate trellises, picket fencing, agrarian elements, and the like that will be incorporated into the project. There will be a pedestrian connection that will be installed midway between Pioneer Street on the south and Lower Buckeye on the north that will provide access to the future Alphria Union High School District site. And the perimeter wall color should blend with the existing El Cidro Community Development, but also feature cobblestone, split rail, and agrarian elements on that fencing. The southern wall along the open space corridor should contain view fencing. No carports should be installed within, or shall be installed within the southern 15 feet, only landscaping. You remember that as a similar stipulation from the Innovation Villas at Sereval Case. And since the existing R1-6 development would allow a building height up to 30 feet on lots 100 feet deep, we have made height restrictions within the southern 100 feet of the property line and site. We are capping the southern 100 feet of the property to a height no greater than 30 feet, which is similar to the existing R1-6. And the existing MF-24 would also, MF-24 allows buildings up to 40 feet in height. So again, the southern 100 feet would be capped at 30, which is what could occur today. And at this time, the developer plans to have the building setback even further on the MF-24 site and place parking there as opposed to structures for the entire 100 feet. The MF-12s will follow the typical MF-12 standard, so that's 30 feet. The applicant hosted, apologize. The applicant hosted a virtual neighborhood meeting on June 1, 2021. Comments from the neighbors were largely concerned with three-story rental products and the loss of views of the mountains to the northwest. Those would be the White Tank Mountains. Additionally, subsequent emails had come into the planning staff and the city council with similar concerns. On September 15, 2021, during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, nine households spoke in opposition of the request, and additional two members of the public filled out forums stating they were opposed to the rezoning request. The members of the public were from the adjacent El Cidro communities, Seen Lomas community, which is northeast of 173rd and Lower Buckeye. And the speaker stated concerns with increased traffic, increased crime, loss of views, noise, transient renters, and homelessness. The commission voted four to one to recommend approval of the rezoning. Staff has evaluated the impacts of this proposed zoning to the greater community, and with no major concerns being found, staff recommends you forward, or you approve the rezoning of the property from R1-6 Single Family Residential to MF-12 Multifamily Residential for approximately 19.18 acres of property on the east side, and MF-24 for approximately 20.95 acres on the west side of the property, subject to the ordinance stipulations. Of note, the applicant will have to construct their half-street improvements along Lower Buckeye Road. So again, on the northern half, they'll have to construct half-street improvements on Lower Buckeye Road. They will need to complete the construction of 173rd Avenue on their east side, and they will need to construct half-street improvements on 175th Avenue on their west side. Subsequent to that, they will also, their provisions for 25% signal contributions if they are needed. That will be the step that would occur at the site plan once more information is known about driveways, entrances, and egress to the site. And with that, happy to answer any questions. And I know the applicant is here with a presentation as well.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Is it possible to get the clicker from you, Christian? Madam Mayor, members of the council, Wendy Riddell with the law firm Barry Riddell. It's my pleasure to be here today and to present Cotton Commons. So I'm actually here today on behalf of Steve Addison and John DeFiebre. They have quite a long history of developing here in the valley, a number of very successful projects. They are also well-capitalized by 29th Street Capital, also a big fan of Goodyear and investing in Goodyear. They are intended to be long-term holders of this property and this project, given that it's in an opportunity zone. As staff mentioned, it's always, I will admit, Christian's always a difficult act to follow because he goes into such detail. So I'm going to attempt to highlight a few other components of it. As he mentioned, we are here requesting two different zoning categories. When you look at this in context, you will see that our site is a quarter of a mile east of the new Loop 303 that is coming, right next to the water campus. And we're also immediately adjacent to the new proposed high school. We did touch base with that high school today. They do anticipate having that constructed within the next five years. They anticipate also to have approximately 1,800 students that would be on that campus. They cannot speak to yet whether or not it will be a full high school or whether or not it will be something that is a bit more specialized. This shows you, obviously, as Christian mentioned, this is a conceptual site plan, but you can see when you lay it is the context and the relationship that it would have with the high school to the west. And then also, if you scroll out a little bit, the context and relationship it ultimately has with the Loop 303 and overall with the surrounding area. And part of the reason, part of the attraction of this site actually goes back to your general plan. Even the general plan prior to the most current version actually contemplated that you would have higher density here, medium and high-density residential. Your most current general plan, which you guys know was approved back in 2014, puts this part of the neighborhoods category, which allows this type of multifamily end density. The general plan also gives us a little bit more guidance when you look to this project. In fact, it particularly calls out that multifamily or high-density residential should be placed along these transportation corridors, that it has to have access to an arterial, such as we do here, and that it should be proximate to major transportation corridors like the Loop 303. And of course, you've talked a little bit, Christian touched on the improvements that will come as part of this project. Certainly, we will be completing all of our half-street improvements. You'll see here the relationship to 303. It's effectively completing out Lower Buckeye Road in front of the project. And I know there's a lot of words on this page, but if you look at it, it talks about not only Lower Buckeye Road, 175th, 173rd, the median, and the contribution to a quarter of the signal. So quite a few infrastructure improvements that come from transportation perspective as part of this project to create that connectivity to the 303. You can see it here again because we're a quarter of a mile to the future Loop 303. That final design now is underway, and this is something I know this council knows, but there have been public outreach about this particular location going back to 2016. One more great point about your general plan is it also discusses the fact that multifamily can exist very successfully adjacent to single-family, but there are some guidelines. It talks about having an open space tract or using a road in between, that that is good planning policy for the City of Goodyear. And frankly, it's policy that you have followed on other projects quite successfully. You see here Centerra, the bottom to the left, Palm Valley to the bottom to the right. That is directly from your general plan. It's also very similar to what is happening here. Immediately south of this project, there is a 102-foot power line corridor, so open space power line corridor to our south. In addition to that, as Christian mentioned, we are proposing to have an additional setback to guarantee for that first 100 feet that there will be no structures above 30 feet. We've also agreed to additional landscaping along that 15 feet. So in total, when you look at this conceptual site plan, you will not have structures for 240 feet. We looked at that and we did that comparison. So where you do that kind of line of sight, you look at the 102-foot power line corridor. You look at the setback from the property lines. In total, you're looking at about 240 feet till you get to a building from the rear property line, rear wall of the adjacent single-family on the other side of that open space tract. Now, if you compare that today by right, single-family homes can be set back. They can be 30 feet tall. So if you consider that corridor, they're at 122. What we are proposing is no more than a 40-foot-tall building and a setback of 240 feet, which I would suggest to you respectfully is a better ultimate condition. One of the other questions that's come up quite a bit is, why here? Why do you want to put this here? The best answer I have for this council is because you guys are very good at your job, and you have a lot of employment that is coming here to Goodyear. You have very successfully brought a lot of employers. Look along the bottom of this map, it's rather impressive. But following that, you need housing. It's a cycle, it's a yin and a yang. To get those types of employers, you have to have appropriate housing. To keep those types of employers, you have to have proximate housing. Your general plan also reflects on this. It recognizes that there needs to be diversity in housing stock, more apartments, more townhomes, and that Goodyear is less than 10% built out in terms of dwelling units, and the growth will come eventually. And I would suggest to you, it's come fast and furious. So with that, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I respectfully reserve the remainder of my time to rebuttal, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I know there are speaker cards, is that correct? Quite a few of them. All right, so let me just say before you call the names out. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The yellow light will let you know we have 20 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and if you are a Goodyear resident. So I'm going to close the public hearing. No, excuse me, I don't want to close the public hearing. Please start reading the names off.
And Mayor, just a note, we do have a number of people in the overflow area. So if we don't see the move right away, we may just set it aside and call the next one.
All right, well, just let me know, let me know.
Okay. Lou McBee.
Be sure you speak into that microphone.
The podium is right there. Yeah, right there.
My name's Lou McBee. I am a Goodyear resident. I'm in Seen Lomas, literally just directly northeast of this community, rock-throwing distance away. The timer, okay, there we go. Basically, I'll make it simple. I am a Goodyear resident. I moved out here because it's Goodyear, it's open, it's farmland. I expected it to develop and grow, but I expect it to develop and grow as a community of houses so that we can build around it, especially with a school coming. I'd rather have houses there for long-term families, not apartments. Apartments are short-term, six-month, three-month, 12-month leases. Maybe you get someone that can't afford a house that lives there for two years, but that's not a family, that's not a community. When you want someone going to, let's say, a local school that's coming in, that's great. But they go to that school this year, they go to this school this year, they don't care about the neighborhood. I want neighbors that are going to care about the neighborhood. The reason why they say, why do we bring it to this location? They brought it here on purpose. This is the perfect suburban area. It's great, you know, hey, we'll bring crappy apartments into this beautiful home area, you know, don't pay for the high price of a home, come move into our apartment. You live in a suburban, great area. Well, that goes away when you bring these apartments in. Simply put, it was zoned for houses. It was zoned for single-family homes. It needs to stay that way. The fact that we have to come to these rezoning hearings is kind of a disservice to the homeowners that pretty much invested into the neighborhood. We spent our money on a home purchase, not a rental, not, you know, short-term housing. I bought my house here. I am currently, you know, there for three years now. I currently plan to stay there longer. I'm improving my home, just got done remodeling my backyard because it's my home, I care about it. I love my neighbors, I drink, play, we'll be out there at Halloween having a good time with neighbors. Apartments simply don't do that. Renters don't care about the neighborhood. They bring in young people, cramming them into certain areas, loud noises. Simply put, I want this neighborhood to stay where it is. I would love it to be the boonies and the farmland forever, but I'm not stupid. It has to grow. But when it grows, I would rather it grow as a community of homes, not apartment complexes. They're putting it here on purpose because it's a great area to advertise and pull in more money for their apartments. They want apartments, they can go next to the Harley-Davidson dealership where that apartment complex went in, or next to the QT and all of the other gas stations where that new apartment complex went in. Those are high-traffic areas with people that can walk to areas. Where are these apartment people going to walk to when they're bored? They're going to walk into my neighborhood, they're going to walk around the area, they're going to destroy the area. It's a crappy walk score in Goodyear, that's why we moved here. I live 22 and a half miles away from my work, so trust me, I didn't move to Goodyear to work here, I moved to Goodyear to get away from everybody. And that's, I think, what most people in Goodyear did. We came out and to get away from everybody, the loud noises and everything else. So with that being said, I would like to say is that you don't live in the area and you're going to ruin these people that invested. I mean, ask yourself, are you going to pay to move them out into the new inflation of these new houses? No, they bought at good prices, and now you're pretty much screwing up their neighborhoods and expecting them to pretty much bend over and take it. I hope you guys actually care about what we say because we're the neighborhood.
Very much. Excuse me. No clapping, I know that seems unfair, but no clapping, no yelling, no talking. Just let each one of them come up and present themselves. Okay, next, Carl Anderson.
Wow, okay. I'm new at this, guys, so please have patience.
Just relax because...
Okay. Well, do I need to push down on something here?
No.
No, okay. My name is Carl Anderson. I live in Seen Lomas, been there for about eight years. Believe it or not, I'm a native Arizonan, born in Mesa, believe it or not, way back when, when the Interstate 10 wasn't even there. Was off the Southern Amish school, used to be all cotton fields and orderages there. I miss those days, I really do. I moved over here to Goodyear to get away from all the hustle and bustle and all the traffic, okay? I love it here, love Goodyear. I feel like we're outmatched in a way because, you know what? We're your typical, average people. We don't have the millions of dollars to hire an attorney or to hire all this fancy, dancy stuff, presentations and everything to show you what we're talking about and what's important to us. To me, if you guys are wanting to put rentals in, there are other options, okay? Now, I know right down the street, there are rental homes, single-family detached rental homes. I don't mind that as much as a big two-story apartment building, okay? Like I say, I love the quietness, I love the area. I don't like the hustle and bustle, I like to stay away from the crime. I'm also a realtor, by the way. I just closed on a house in Beezer. They had a public report a year ago when he got under contract. Didn't mention anything like this. He bought. You know what? They just closed, they just moved in a few weeks ago. Took him a year and a half to build, but bam, as soon as he moves in, he gets this in front of him. I'm sure he's not happy. That's all I can say. I really would like to keep that as a single-family detached home. I think of the other options. Think of us. Think of us. That's all I can tell you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Eichman.
Hi. I'm not a big public speaker either. I'm the one Carl's referring to. I just moved in over Labor Day weekend. I just closed on the twenty-fourth, so it's been thirty days. I moved here originally from Indiana. I stayed with my mom in Sun City until this home was finished. There's been a lot of obstacles, ups and downs, but this by far just took the breath right out of me. I mean, I came here under the impression it was single-family homes. I'm not sure where everyone lives, but Indiana is mostly farmland. A single, like the other guy was saying, a single-family resident cares about his property. You know, apartment people pay to have other people maintain it. They don't care about their dwelling, their parking lot, their surrounding area. They don't do landscape, they don't pick up anything. It creates an environment of negativity and that spreads in our community. I'm just disappointed. I'm sad, I'm really disappointed. I've got things going on with the house I got to work out. I really love the area. This was my forever home, you know? I don't know if any of you live near an apartment complex that big. My previous experience as a child, shortly after the apartment complex was put in, my bicycle was stolen, you know? There were people running through the neighborhood. It's just the nature of the beast. If you put, how many parking spots are in there? How many? You know, you've got seven hundred parking spots and twenty acres and at least probably three or four hundred of them, if they go to work, are going to be going at the same time. What's that going to do to traffic? What's that going to do to my commute? When they go home, all of this, it looks good. I didn't see a 3D image of what my mountains are going to look like after they build this building. They had all these documents. They said it was two hundred and forty feet. That's not even a football field. That's eighty yards. Let's be realistic. You know, I could pretty much walk that in less than a minute. I hope you take into consideration all the good family homes that are there and the good families that want to raise families, want to have kids, want to take their dogs for a walk, not worry about what's across the street in the three-story buildings, that they don't care about the residents. So, with that, that's all I have to say and I hope it stays a single-family community. That's what I bought into and that's what I believe in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Evangelina Jimenez.
My name is Evangelina Jimenez and I am a Goodyear resident.
Take that microphone, bend it down a little bit. Yes, there you go.
My name is Evangelina Jimenez and I'm a Goodyear resident. I'm from Arizona. I was born here, I was raised here. So, I saw when Tolleson, Cash and Abendale were far apart, you had mostly farmland, and to see it grow the way it has is great, but we want to keep our community the way it is. We don't want apartments there because it brings, who knows, into the neighborhood? High traffic, drugs. We're going to put a high school there? Do we want our high school kids to be able to just walk across the street and get drugs? Do you want an apartment complex near where you live? I don't think so. My ex-husband, he had a house in Goodyear, built it, thought, oh, well, I have great value on my home. Apartment complex went in, traffic, you know, people breaking into other people's vehicles or houses in his area brought the value of his home down. So, I just don't think it's a good idea. You know, yeah, we're getting all this money and everybody's bringing everything in. It's not a good idea. We want to keep our homes the way they are and that's why I bought my home. And I've been in there less than a year and now I'm having to see these apartments maybe go up? No, I bought it for a reason and I want to keep it that way. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Next. Michael Santoyani.
I'm Michael Santoyani. I do live in El Cidro in Arizona. I moved here last year. I retired. I don't know if any, I'm going to ditto everything everybody said. I do know what it's like to live in apartment buildings. I grew up in New York City. I also lived in Chicago. Moved out of there to move my family, you know, into better areas where they eventually brought apartment buildings, which eventually turned into major crime, from bicycles to cars, breaking into garages and then it moves into the homes. I've seen it happen, I've lived it. Sixty-five years old, I've been around this a long time. My wife and I retired, come out here. She researched it. She made phone calls endlessly to make sure this, what's happening now, would not happen. We decided to move here. We came out here three times, spent some time, researched it. We loved Goodyear, came out here, built a new home. I've been in my house seven months. Here I am again. I've had to move twice before for this exact same reason. This was my forever home. I basically came here to write my last chapter and die, life over, and enjoy it. And here I am. You know, my wife's like livid. She's like, you know what? Do we need to sell? We need to get out of here already? You're kidding me. I agree with what everybody else has to say and I've lived in apartment complexes for many years and I'm telling you what you bring in, it's nothing good for this town. I like this town, it's a great town. I love living here. I really don't want to move. I really don't. But I'm telling you what, apartment life, you bring it in here, things are going to change. And the people building this, do they live here? I doubt it. I doubt it. And the people voting on this, I'd like them to vote on it like it was going up in their backyard because it's going right behind my house. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next. Robert Leslie.
Anybody else cold?
Good evening. Robert Leslie, I live in El Cidro. I've moved to Arizona. We did the research. The community was developed and zoned residential, single-family homes. If this developer has owned this property since 2005, why did he sit on it for almost twenty years before he decided to rezone it? So, with that, I attended the zoning meeting and so I think I sent most of you an email after that meeting. The developer has owned this property. If you look at the property now, it weeds. If he can't keep that mode down, what's he going to do when he builds an apartment complex? And I have a view fence, so I see this out my back door. The zoning committee, the gentleman running it, basically said he rubber stamps whatever the city brings to home, which is concerning. And also, one of the other committee members on the zoning committee said he would only put apartments by freeway. You all have known the corridor for 303 for years. You may not have known the exact path, but the zoning committee and the city council approved El Cidro as single-family. They approved Sinlomas as a single-family. If you wanted apartments there, you should not have approved the single families. Traffic, everyone's mentioned traffic. You're putting seven hundred and fifty or seven fifty-one parking spaces? That traffic cannot handle right there. Kids, kids will get bored in the apartment complex. They will cross their view fence into the green space behind us. Things will start coming into my backyard. They'll get bored, they'll vandalize our homes. The developer doesn't live in the neighborhood. Their attorney doesn't live in the neighborhood. I'm assuming most of you do not live in the neighborhood. We're left stuck to deal with it. And sort of going one more step further, if he builds an apartment complex, he can't maintain it? He can't maintain a field. How's he going to maintain an apartment complex with a thousand people living in it? And so, one of the last things I want to leave with is, we all researched before we bought our homes, it was zoned family, single-family. Why change it now? If you wanted apartments in that area, you should have zoned it that way before anyone built. El Cidro, their addition currently now is done. I know there's another seven hundred-plus homes going in there. They don't know what's happening. They're not going to be happy when they find out about this. So, again, I would ask you all as good stewards of Goodyear, listen to your community who lives in this neighborhood. You all are on this board for a reason, so you need to listen to us and not just be a developer and their attorney who has lots of money. They don't live here, they don't care about the community. I'll mark my words, he'll build this, he'll sell it within five years. And it'll turn into a crime-ridden, devastation of places for us to deal with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next. Adam Brown.
Mayor Castle, thanks for allowing me to speak. My name's Adam Brown. I've been a resident here for Goodyear now for a year. Like everybody else spoken before me, I'm probably going to speak behind me. Bought my house, spent $400,000 on a home. Wanted to move into a single-family residential area. I've sent you guys emails with pictures of my view fence. I have a view fence in the back. Yes, the mountain is nice, but I do know that it is going to grow. But with growth, it depends on what kind of growth. Three-story apartment complex, not growth, not the growth that we need. When you put in a high-density population home, that brings crime. That's already been touched, crime, traffic, collisions, those sorts of things. Currently, Cotton Lane does not have the infrastructure to build to actually maintain that. We are going to have like, what is it, like nine hundred homes being built south of us in addition to the apartment complex. Infrastructure's not there. Yeah, 303 is coming, but when? I think you guys said maybe like five or six years, but what about until then? What about the increase in crime? We got a plan in place to increase public safety to help support this. So, those are some of my concerns. Some things that I want to point out, though, is how we have people on this board determining rezoning for where I live. They don't live there. Why are they determining what's best for me, my family and my neighborhood? They're making an opinion of something that's not impacting it. Well, this is impacting me. This is impacting my family, this is impacting my neighborhood and everybody behind me that's supporting this. So, when you guys vote on this, I want you to remember one thing. Each one of you are elected officials. You are here to represent the people. Myself and many other people are here speaking out against this. Not a single person is going to stand up here and say, yes, please put a three-story apartment complex in my backyard. No one in their right mind is going to do that. Would you guys want that in your backyard or in your neighborhood? My guess would be no. So, please, have integrity and do what's right and let's shut this down because that is what you as elected officials are to do, to listen to the people. And the people have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Brian Day.
Good evening. I'm Brian Day. I've been a resident of Goodyear for sixteen years, also a small business owner in town. And I can't add too much to what everybody's already said. I totally agree and echo their sentiments about crime, about traffic, about, you know, the fact that we're not going to get what we paid for, what we moved here for. I specifically, when we were looking for a home, chose Goodyear because it looked like the right place to be. And we chose a place. I'm not in Sinlomas, I'm not quite as close as some of these other folks, but I'm right at the back wall. I butt Sinlomas and I can tell you, I'm not looking forward to some of the crime we're going to see. I'm specifically not looking forward to the public safety issues with traffic. My wife and I take our dog for a walk every evening and already the traffic has increased quite a bit, you know, since we've moved there. The traffic is, you know, with a speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour, we're seeing forty-five, fifty miles an hour. I'm here to tell you, with that traffic light at Cotton Lane, you will never see people use that. They're going to use 173rd and go right through Cotton Flower, right past Sinlomas and they're going to be speeding like a demon because they want to get wherever they're going. So, public safety is going to be a big deal. And as I said, a lot of people have already, you know, expressed their opinions about the way that the community is going to change down there. So, I won't waste your time with that, but I wanted to bring that up and bring up the public safety issue as well.
Thank you. Next. Ruth Ford.
Evening, everyone. My name is Ruth Ford. I'm a resident of Goodyear. Moved here about a year ago, just to echo what a lot of other people have said. After doing a lot of research, after looking at dozens of properties from Glendale, Surprise, Peoria, Buckeye, like specifically chose Goodyear because it's beautiful, fell in love with the house, fell in love with the lot and my view, the backyard, built a, first time built a house from the ground up. Like, this is my American dream. This is my backyard. And as the other gentleman mentioned, no one would plunk down $400,000 on a house and find out that they're going to be looking at the back of an apartment complex. So, I am just here this evening to implore you to please consider what we want and not just rubber stamp this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Jimmy Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy, Jimmy Thomas, and I would like to say basically what everyone else has said. I've just purchased a new home in El Cidro and I was really, really proud during the process of going through the purchase of it. And after finding out that this new proposal was already planned, I feel very different. I feel very different. I've experienced many things over a period of thirty years. Lived in Phoenix. I basically moved from Chicago, Illinois. And I'm one of the, I would say, members of this meeting that have owned, this is my fourth home. I've traveled through the States, retired from AT&amp;T and this was like the home that I really, really wanted to complete everything with. And so, I'm somewhat unhappy and walking in, I basically signed not approval and I feel that this new home proposal will change. It will really, really change the El Cidro community because it's right there. And I've experienced this in my lifetime. And there will be changes. There will be changes in many things. There will be changes in the cost of living. Things will change. Your insurance will change, your HOA cost will change, the city property, properties will change and the community will become very, very busy. Something I believe most of the people that moved in the immediate area will feel different about. And so, that's about what I wanted to say and I want to say, I hope something can change. If not, that's the way it will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. LaTerrence Houston.
Good evening, everyone. My name is LaTerrence Houston. I am an El Cidro resident and like most of you, this property or proposed development would actually be going up and directly in my backyard. I am one of those individuals with a view fence and I'm vehemently against it. I'm originally from San Diego and unlike a lot of you, I assume, I grew up in apartment buildings. I understand what it's like to have individuals on top of you, on the bottom of you, bumping your cars, late at night, noise complaints and different things of that nature. El Cidro's not like that. I am probably the only nuisance in the neighborhood. I walk a lot, I'm loud, but all my neighbors know me and I know all my neighbors. And it makes me feel safe when I leave the house at midnight. When I leave the house at four o'clock in the morning to walk my dog. I still know everyone because I see those same individuals, day in, day out. They stop their cars, they honk, they wave. We'd lose that. We'd lose that sense of community. We'd lose that running into your neighbor at the store and then saying, hey, fancy meeting you here. Just the little things that come with community in itself. We've talked a lot about the crime rate. Of course, there's going to be crime. We've never talked about how it's going to impact our local economy, though, because for us personally, homeowners, our property taxes are going to increase. We're going to have to build more infrastructure. Of course, we're going to say, hey, look, maybe we'll get a couple of new restaurants. But will that really matter when we have to wait an additional fifteen minutes in Line of Fries or a Target? Right? And then, what do those frustrations build? The people in Phoenix, we all say are crazy. It's because they're right next to each other. Here, we have space. Throwing in an additional, what do they say? Probably fifteen hundred people, subletting. You really don't know who's in the apartment once the apartment's rented. It's not something that's conducive for the neighborhood that, again, we have all together built. And us as a community have decided that this isn't something we want and we expect our council to echo that sentiment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next. Sandra Cordova.
Hello, my name is Sandra Cordova. I live in El Cidro. Pretty much, I, everything they're saying is true. I moved to Goodyear. I studied everything. I knew the freeway was coming. I was okay with that. I wasn't okay with the apartment. I come from Phoenix. I deliver to multiple apartments, luxury apartments in Phoenix through my job. So I see these apartments, the management, they, the owners say, oh, we're going to have, we're going to be the management for a system for X amount of years, but they lie. They change them. I've delivered to apartments that changed owners three, four times. Rules change, they've gone down, they bring the whole neighborhood down. You're talking about seven hundred-plus vehicle parking. Well, everybody has kids, everybody has their extra cars. Those cars are going to start parking in our neighborhoods. When we moved to Goodyear, we moved because my daughter would go out and walks, and she'd get harassed. She cannot, she can actually walk in Goodyear safely without me worrying, without me sitting there watching an app for her to go walk around. Some of my, these, my neighbors have actually seen her walking around. She is quiet. She's not a people person. So for me, to be happy, to be, feel safe in my neighborhood is very, very important. And by you guys voting for these apartments to be built, not only, what am I trying to say? Not only is it a disappointment for me and my fellow neighbors, but it basically shows that you really are not listening to us. So please, please listen to us when we say we do not want these apartments. We don't want the traffic, we don't want the crime. We want to be able to let our kids play like we played when we were kids. Go out, play, lights come on, come home, and be safe about it. We want to feel that sense of community, that sense that says, I don't mind my children going out and play because I know they're not going to be bothered by some crazy sexual, you know, predator moving into these apartments, which, you know, they're allowed to move in apartments, they're allowed to move anywhere as long as they have X amount of things. So there's so many different factors that go into these apartments that we can't even touch on because we don't have time. But I implore you guys, please, do not approve these apartments. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next. Robin Calde.
Hello, my name is Robin Calde. I live in El Cidro, in Goodyear, and we just moved in about a year ago. And this is, we've never had a house before that was built from the ground up. We always lived in the city where, you know, you have everything. When you have a house that is brand-new in rural area, it's kind of nice. It's nice not to have, to worry about being on top of each other. Yeah, the crime goes up when you're, you have a lot of apartments and things like that. My son is an adult, special needs, but, you know, he's good. He's, he's got a lot of things, but he, he doesn't like to talk to people. He's got a speech, something with his speech, you know, like Asperger's. So he's very intelligent, but he likes to walk around at night because it's cooler. He doesn't like the heat. I know, maybe you guys probably feel the same way about some of it. So he's really happy for the October months and things like that. Well, he walks at night and does his Pokemon go, and he's very happy. And when we have this housing area, El Cidro, it's so nice. He walks across to the canyon trails and, and I feel happy that he's out walking around, at least doing something. And, you know, as I said, he's an adult, so he can go do these things. The lady's daughter is younger, probably, teenager, maybe. I, I work at night and I come home different hours. And I've seen somebody on one of the streets, Kendall Street, about six months ago, in a van, a white-paneled van with, I don't know, tools and things inside. And I'm not used to this. I'm going like, well, what is, what are they doing in that van? This guy coming out, is he, is he doing something to somebody's house? I don't know. But I was watching the neighborhood because I'd never seen anybody, I'd never seen that truck. Well, it did have some kind of writing on it. I called the cops on him. I said, hey, you know, it's probably nothing, but, you know, I'm a concerned homeowner here, and I want my neighbors safe. So they, I said, you don't need to come back and tell me anything, but later today, I did hear that from some of the neighbors that, yeah, somebody's air conditioning went out at night, and they were fixing it at two in the morning. And I was like, is, I didn't think that was really banker's hours, basically. So I'm, I'm just feel proud to be in this community, and I love being in Goodyear. We, we lived in Surprise for a while, and we've lived in Orange County, California. We've lived in Maine. We've lived in all of the different places. And we came here for, you know, the community is nice, single-family homes, and that's what we like is, is be able to have my son walk around at night. The neighbors, I see them, they're having fun. You know, they're out at night. And some of them, you know, they're out during the day, too, but I know some of my neighbors. I, I try to know them.
I'm sorry, the red light.
So thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Also, we need good water, cold water.
Next. Angela Williams.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. My story may be a little bit different from everybody else's. My husband and I were in the military. He was in the military for twenty-five years. And we would come here to Arizona on vacation, and we fell in love with Goodyear. We had searched around, and we really liked how Goodyear looked. We loved the greenery of it, we loved the people of it, and so we finally decided to make it our home two years ago after he got done with his obligations. All three of us are educators, and we live in Sinlomas. The thing that we like about it is that there's the freedom to walk and not be harassed. We walk around those fields that you're talking about building. And I don't know about everybody else, but when I'm out walking, I like that peace and quiet. You know, I'm not having to worry about day-to-day problems. You put apartments there, we're not going to have that quiet anymore. We're not going to have the beautiful views that we have. We're going to be looking at apartments. You know, if we wanted to do that, we could go to a bigger city and look at those. So I'm asking that you please do not put those apartments there. There's many reasons that other people have discussed, so I don't need to go over those. But I'm just saying, you know, let Goodyear be Goodyear. Let the people be the beautiful people that they are, and let, let Goodyear be beautiful. Let us have the, the serenity and the views and, and not be plagued by possible crime. I'm not going to say crime, but possible crime. You know, you also have to be aware that there's a bus stop right there. You put the apartments right there, what's going to happen with the kids? They speed already. Now you have the kids that are waiting there for a bus. I don't think that's a good call. So I'm just asking to please not put the apartments there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. TJ Wade.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. Yes, my name is TJ Wade. I live here in Goodyear. I moved from Michigan to here, and like everybody else, I was proud and honored to live in this community because it's such a beautiful community. Now, to make this short, I did everything everybody said up here. But I especially wanted to talk to the council about have they ever considered building more restaurants out here? I don't know if you guys realize, but Outback is way out there on Grand and Bell. Texas Roadhouse is way over there on McDowell and stuff. You've got all these people living in this community, and we have very few restaurants, you know. I mean, everybody gets tired of fast food all the time, you know. We want some decent restaurants, restaurants out here. And that's all we're asking. So like I said, I echo everything everybody else said here, and I agree with it because I lived in Detroit. I know what apartments bring and stuff like, and we don't want that here. I don't want that here. And I'm hoping and praying that the councils do listen to the people and what we're saying. I understand it's big business, people want to make money and stuff like that, but I don't think we need that here because we, we're prospering enough as it is already. And we need to just do certain things for the people that's going to help the people. And bringing these apartments in is not going to help the people. That's not going to help the resident in keeping our neighborhood safe and, and beautiful. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor, we have a number that have indicated that they do not wish to speak. Candy Anderson did not indicate whether they were supportive or opposed to the staff, opposed. And the rest are opposed. I have Linda Esposito, Liliana Calderon, Jose Carrasco, Brian and Teresa Neely, Paul Harley, Melissa Wilkins, Karen Moffett, Raymond Jim, Jim, Jimira, Kevin Kingsbury, Patricia Kingsbury, John Boswell, Brianna Navahar, and Ayesha King Jones. Those are all the cards I have for this item.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I'm hoping they could pull my presentation back up for a few minutes for rebuttal. If you wouldn't mind jumping to slide twenty-one. That's honestly how I would have done it, too, so. Keep going, if you would. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, change is hard, and growth is very hard. In fact, we are conditioned as human beings not to like change. My husband buys a new kind of coffee, I'm not happy about it. And that change often brings fear. And the fear of what's changing is very understandable. I certainly respect the fear. I can appreciate the fear, but it's simply not factual. So what you're looking at is a renter profile that was done on a national basis. They looked at five point seven million transactions, and they broke apart what makes up a renter. Who are the people today that are in these apartments? I can tell you, there are extensive background checks that go into each of these individual renters. And in fact, you cannot deny the ability for someone to buy a home for many of the reasons you are permitted under law to deny them the ability to rent. These renters are people you know. They may even be members of the council. They're certainly friends of mine. These are people within Goodyear's community. When you look, also, these are national averages. Forty-eight point seven percent of renters make fifty thousand dollars or more. Twenty-seven point six of renters make at least seventy-five thousand dollars. And in fact, one of the things they're seeing is a national trend, not only a local trend, is that a large, the largest growth that they're seeing in the people that choose to rent make more than a hundred thousand dollars. These are people we know. These are people that are a part of our community. We also know that the apartment complexes in Goodyear, these are not homeless encampments. These are not slums. These are not, you know, places where you see sex trafficking. These are wonderful contributing members of Goodyear's community. Again, I go back to the same example you saw in the general plan. You saw Centerra, you saw Palm Valley. As you look forward, and I, I know this council's familiar with it, if you go out and look at Centerra, you see it's even closer to those existing single-family homes that are there today. This is what Seraphina looks like. It's beautiful. You look at Centerra and Lunaire, one of the other ones that was mentioned. You look at Lunaire, this is a, a portion of Goodyear's community today. These are beautiful developments within Goodyear. And the same thing, this was a Twenty-Ninth Street Capital project, the Max. Again, even closer to single-family homes than what we're proposing here today. This is what it looks like. What we're talking about when you look at the single-family for rent, we've got rental fees set at market rates range, we anticipate, between fourteen hundred and twenty-one hundred. The apartment side, the rental fees set at market rate range between fourteen fifty and two thousand. These are contributing members of Goodyear's community. And I, and I know this is a difficult conversation. I know growth within a community is challenging. I respect everything everyone has had to say tonight, but I truly believe that these will be a good contributing community within Goodyear. Respectfully request your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I see someone holding your hand up. That, that part of the tour is done, so. All right. Excuse me. Who spoke up? Please don't do it again. Let us finish this so you can get the opinion of the council. Because I'm close to having you go out, okay? All right, where are we now? Okay. Before I close the public hearing, I want to thank you all for behaving yourself and talking on a very difficult subject and something you love very much, something you have invested in. So I'm, I'm giving you a handshake for that and a clap. Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to close this public hearing. Will the city clerk please read resolution number twenty-two-one dash twenty-one sixty-nine? By title only, please.
Adopt resolution number twenty-two-one dash twenty-one sixty-nine declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled official supplementary zoning map number twenty-one dash zero five, City of Goodyear AZ rezone case, legal description dash cotton commons, legal description dash cotton commons MF twelve parcel, and legal description, description dash cotton commons MF twenty-four parcel.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash twenty-one sixty-nine? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Was that Councilman, motion made by Councilman Campbell, a second by Councilman Cano? All right, council, up for discussion. Councilman Basile.
Christian, question for you. On the stipulations in there, how does that play into your traffic? I know you've got, what, twenty-seven stipulations in there?
Yes, there are twenty-seven stipulations. Part of the stipulations are completing the half-street improvement. So for example, Lower Buckeye Road on the north, the half-street of one hundred and seventy-fifth on the west, and then completing one hundred and seventy-third Avenue on the east. In addition to that, so what happens at the zoning stage is there's a traffic impact analysis. That impact analysis will look at the land use type, residential, and the intensity of the zoning. If this is approved, it moves into the site plan phase, and there's an additional traffic impact analysis based on where driveways are going, where ingress and egress are going. And then there's a more detailed analysis on traffic signals triggering and other developments that may have come into the area. So those stipulations address those.
So right now, you don't know entry and exit for this facility yet?
Zoning does not dictate entry and exit, but we know that there's potential signals that could come. Thus, there's the stipulation that would address if those signals are needed.
And, you probably won't know, but high school, do you have any idea when that timeline of that high school is going in?
I spoke with the superintendent today. They anticipate that within the next year or two, they will start studying the feasibility of a high school. They do own this site. They are not certain if this will be their sixth conference of high school, or if that will go to a different location, but they are aware, they're planning for an additional But they are aware, they're planning for an additional high school in the district within the next five years.
So it's not definite that it may be on this site? Is that what your hands are in?
That's correct. But they did indicate that they would be, this site would be used for district uses.
Okay. Now, on the perimeter, this thing's all going to be walled and I guess private entrance, correct?
That's not determined by zoning.
But in the site review?
Pardon?
When you actually go through the site? Maybe that's probably a better call for the developer. Let me ask her that. Okay, thanks, Christian.
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, yes, they would be private, secured entrances. And there will be no access to the south.
Okay, now you had mentioned earlier about the contract on people coming in. What kind of wording is in the contract that will be? Well, first of all, you had mentioned that whoever's building this is going to own it and not. Because some of these buildings are built to fill them up. I know the one off of, I guess it's Virginia, was live and now it's something else. And once I got full, they sold it, okay? You're saying this guy is going to own it when it's built for long term?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, this particular property is in what is called an opportunity zone. So from a tax perspective, they are definitely incentivized to own this for over 10 years. That's also their intent. They have a portfolio of these that they own, maintain, and manage.
And I don't know if it's probably for Christian as far as, I believe our code enforcement is still responsible for making sure that property inside apartment complexes are up to snuff? As well as the right of ways?
Yeah, so for example, if we approve something in the site plan, our arm from the city is code to help ensure that it's maintained to the way that it was approved.
That it was approved. Okay, that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Next, Councilman Loritana.
I have a couple of questions. I don't know if it's for you or for Wendy or for exactly who here. With regard to the traffic, one of my biggest concerns is obviously we're having it several other areas right now in the valley. Is the high school more than this apartment complex? And so how are you talking or are you planning with regard to where that signal or where the interest goes in for a high school, assuming it? And I don't know what type of high school it's going to be, but that seems to be a problem we have quite a bit right now.
I'm not sure if that's to me or to Christian. I'm happy to address it.
Let me know.
Why don't I give it a shot, Christian? And you can certainly supplement. So we have had discussions with the high school. They are very excited that we are coming in and building our half-street. Because that means for circulation, they ultimately only have to build their half-street. So I think ultimately that helps facilitate the development of the high school. It's part of the planning. It also completes out the improvements for the south half of Lower Buckeye Road. If you look to our east, that has already taken place. So it allows that broader cross-section all the way to the Loop 303.
Okay. And when is the 303 going to be built down to that area? Do we have a timeframe?
The last date I heard was 2027, but I believe Simeon is here.
Yes, please.
Sure, your question, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. When's the 303 going to be built? And is it going to be above or below?
It will be above.
It's going to be high?
Yes.
How high?
I have someone coming forward to address.
Simeon's going to answer all my freeway questions. Thank you.
Mayor and council, we have a design schedule about Loop 303, but we do not have a certain final date of construction from ADOT on that. We are approximating around 2028. But that is not finalized at this moment. And it will be above the grade crossing.
How high above is the 303 going to be?
Right now, we don't have the vertical profile.
Okay.
So I could not say for sure.
Do we know what it, just so I can visualize, would it be like around how it is by coming off the 303? Would it be that high up?
I would anticipate that.
Okay, thank you. That gives me some visualization. I appreciate that.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have a question about, we were talking about some of these are garden units. And I guess I have a question on what consists of a garden unit? What makes that different than a normal, what people are considering apartment complex? What is the difference there? And how do our design standards affect either of those?
So I use the term garden because that's typically the type of product you'll see in an MF24, MF18. So an example of a garden would be Centerra or Lunaire. So you have a central stairwell corridor typically. You have a building that's approximately 16 or 24 units in a building versus an MF24, which we call single-family rentals commonly. That's typically a duplex-type unit or a single standalone unit, 12 units an acre.
Okay. When I speak to garden style, they're typically talking about walk-up apartments. So no more than three stories.
Okay, I would think they'd be the other. So I appreciate that. And how about our design standards for those? How do those apply?
Yes, so these are straight zones to MF24 and MF12. So they would need to follow the city's design guidelines. And in addition to that, they would need to follow the guidelines that we put in addition in the zoning stipulation. So for example, the multitude of colors, the four unique buildings, beyond the grays and tans, those types of things would be, need to be followed in addition to what is in our straight MF12, MF24 zoning.
Okay. And then is this going to be gated or access controlled?
Yes, Mayor and Councilwoman, yes, the intent is that it would be gated and access controlled.
So you could only get in if you had a card or, okay. Because I know in Australia, just over the weekend, we had a couple of people get their, whatever, the catalytic converters on their driveways taken out. I know that's been a problem. So I was wondering if this is access control?
Yeah.
Okay. I think those are all the questions I have right now. I might have more if I can, if I think of more.
Yes, if you think of more, this is all we want it all out tonight. Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I might have some more later too. But so the whole, the map of the, well, I guess I'll start here. So the M12, I just want to make sure that I'm clarifying. That is the single, that's the single-story version. So majority of what's near the residence is the single-story product on the right, on the west side here?
And to be clear, it could be two-story. They have typically in Goodyear been built as one-story. The height restriction is 25 feet.
Okay, okay. And then the three-story or that height is the other eastern portion, which touches, I don't know, I mean, house, 10 potential residents directly closest to them and then the future school.
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
And they don't have to be three stories. It's a height up to 40 feet.
Yeah, it could be the way the building looks.
Correct.
So architectural emit things. So and then what's the build-out of Lower Buckeye, the width? Because I know that's going to be nothing but houses. Traffic's going to increase no matter what in this or not this there from Cotton all the way to Perryville where Las Barises is. So because I know with that water line that they just put in there, that, that solution that was put in there years ago, that that's going to be nothing but a single-story, majority of single-story houses now and other products along there out there. How wide is Lower Buckeye going to be? I know we're talking about the south being done, but how wide will Lower Buckeye be?
So that will be a minor arterial. So think of that as looking like Cereval Avenue between Yuma and Wildflower Ranch when it's completed. That's the typical standard for a minor arterial.
Can we confirm it?
That's not a good example because that's like not, that restriction, she's not done, I don't think, always.
You, Mayor, members of council, yeah, Christian is right. It is a minor arterial. So it'd be two lanes each direction with a median. It'd be similar to the situation on Cotton Lane between McDowell Road and Indian School Road. We have two lanes each direction with a raised median.
Okay, and the traffic study's been done for that entire area with the general plan and with how that's set up? Does that be correct?
Yes, the TA was submitted with this development and it was reviewed and approved by the city.
Yeah, this one, but also the, what's going to go between Perryville and, and 303 on Lower Buckeye?
They've come in in pieces as they are developed. They're all at different stages of approval or whether they've been submitted or not. But there's, there's several different pieces. They're not submitted all at once. It's at the pace of the developers.
Okay, yeah, I know growth pays for growth. So I know it'll be hodgepodge until it all gets built in, like majority of Goodyear. I mean, that's how it gets built, so. And then what's the timeline for this project? Have you known the developer, how fast they're planning on building something like this? If they were going to get approval for it?
Yes, thank you. And I realize I, you're actually the vice mayor, so I apologize. I spoke earlier. But they certainly, upon, you know, should we be approved tonight, we'd immediately move forward to site plan review and move as diligently as possible through ultimately the civil permitting and construction process. You're still probably looking, let's assuming things go very well. I imagine you're still 18 months away before you would see anything happen on site. I should mention too, my client doesn't actually own the site today. So it is under contract.
Oh. And then other questions I had. Yeah, I mean, listening to Lou and Carol and Dennis, Evelyn, Michael, and trying to think of other things. Yeah, and yeah, I think traffic's going to definitely increase no matter what goes there just because of all the rest of the zoning that's along Lower Buckeye. Yeah, it's going to be louder. I know this is quiet, but the high school and everything else that'll be going there. That'll be, it's going to come. Yeah, so I was just curious about the infrastructure, what that looks like for future residents and the whole build-out of Lower Buckeye, which will be significant. Okay, that's the question I had so far. I might come back, have some more.
Next, Councilman Campbell. I just have a couple of questions. Wendy, did you say that the entire project is going to be gated?
Mayor, Councilwoman, yes, the entire project will be gated.
And it's too early to talk about fencing, isn't it?
There are stipulations that address fencing.
What does the stipulation say?
It says that the theme of the fencing needs to match that of El Cidro and include cobble, picket fencing, and agrarian elements. So if they build a fence, which it seems like they will, that's what we're going to look for.
With no gates? No gates into the?
I think she means view fencing.
It's view fencing on the south, no gates into the south.
Okay. My next question is, you said the owners, to the tax advantage, would own it for a minimum of 10 years. And then they obviously would have a property manager on site, living on site, that would manage all of the properties.
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman.
They normally do.
Absolutely. And as you, I suspect, understand that if there are problems on site, they have to immediately resolve them and get those people out of there because they don't, they're in the business of renting units and having people here and having the community going well. So yes, you are correct.
Okay. And my last question is probably to both of you. But Christian, I'm sorry, I don't know the 27 stipulations is. So is there a time limit that the roads have to be finished? The roads that they are saying they're going to do partial? Are they given a time limit? Do they do it first? Or do they build and then do it? I mean, how, how do we know how long that's going to take?
They would need to have the roads completed with the adjacent.
Oh, here comes Christopher. I should have asked him that this morning when I called in. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Christopher.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, thank you for the question. As part of the project, as Christian alluded to previously and Ms. Riddell alluded to, after, after, if this project is approved, they will go through the site plan project and they go through the civil engineering process and then also the vertical review of the buildings to make sure it's meeting building codes. There cannot be any certificate of occupancies issued for the buildings until all of the infrastructure needed to support the project, meaning the half-street, the half-street improvements is all completed. Now, there can be phasing. To be clear, there can be phasing. Maybe they want to do the MF12 on the east side first. And so there can be phasing of that infrastructure. However, I think given the limited scope and amount of frontage that they have on Lower Buckeye, that the city would frown on that. We would prefer to see it all done at one time.
Okay, thank you.
But no certificate of occupancies for buildings until the infrastructure needed to support them is in place.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, Mayor, is while Christian alluded to the site of the high school, we know that Awafriya knows that site's there, but that doesn't necessarily mean they will select that site now to build on it when they do do their sixth high school. It won't necess, like they did Canyon View. We thought it was coming into Goodyear, but it didn't. It went into Litchfield Park into a county island area, even though our children go to that school. So I don't want people here tonight thinking that that school's going to be developed within the next three or four years because they have not decided when they're going to do that.
Very correct.
So thank you very much. Councilman Kano?
Regarding the school site, how many acres is it?
I believe that site there is approximately 40 acres, 40 to 50 acres.
Okay. So that is going to be a substantial project as well, probably with height. And definitely, high schools bring traffic. On the proposed projects here, can you tell us, Wendy, about the amenities? What will keep people interested and engaged in, on the, on site?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman. That's a great question. Today, it is very important and these projects will be extremely well amenitized. You're looking at gyms, you're looking at pools and ramadas and barbecues. And they have places for people to put their packages, so concierge package service. And really, it is important to be very competitive that these will be highly amenitized facilities.
Great, thank you. There were, there were a couple comments made about appearance of apartments. And I think that's something that council has definitely heard over time and definitely noticed that you have incorporated a lot of stipulations into this. So it's not the gray, gray, or grayest and, and some of the ones that have been referenced. And to Mr. Wade's point, we all want restaurants here. And that has definitely been a big part of what we're, we're hoping to get here. I probably will have more questions.
Well, we're not going to close it yet. We're going to get it all. Councilman Stip?
Is this your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. I think you had a slide, an aerial slide in there that shows the, the, kind of what's in the area. I'm trying to get oriented. I can look at it on my, my own Google Maps, but. I think that one will do. Okay, so directly south of this site is El Cidro. And then directly west of that is the remainder of, I'm going to call it El Cidro. It may have a different name, but. So right on, right south of the high school lot, you know, that whole area right there, that's under construction as El Cidro, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the area directly to the north of that, which is west of Sinlomas, which I think some of the folks live, that are here tonight, live there. So what is that?
That is La Jolla Vista.
Okay. What is the plan for that?
There's a submittal in today. And that submittal calls for single-family, a park, and a school. An elementary school.
In this, in this area?
And today, it's approved for single-family, a park, and a school.
Okay. So I'm trying to gauge if that's a, if that's shocking to you guys or, okay. Yeah, so I think one of the, one of the challenges that we, that we face sitting here is we kind of have some idea of what is going on in these areas generally over time. I think this stuff was approved back in probably '07, '08. And then we, that was part of the original 11 or 14.
Right.
Landholders that came together. And then it broke apart and it came back together and blah, blah, blah. So and I, just for those that are here, we, we don't own the land. We don't control it. So as much as I want those exact same restaurants and a couple of more, I don't own any property in the city other than what my house sits on. And I would love to put those restaurants here. So I think the, the challenge that we have is, is trying to look into this crystal ball, what does our future look like? So, so now that I have an, an understanding of that, I thought during your presentation. So, so now that I have an, an understanding of that, I thought during your presentation, you said that three oh-three from there, I thought you said was a mile and a quarter, but then I think it's a quarter mile.
Quarter mile.
Quarter mile.
Okay. So, we're fairly, we're fairly close in, in that regard as well, and I think that we all expected it to go straight down Cotton Lane, and now it's curving to the west. The power line corridor there, that's a hundred feet wide, is that correct?
Yes, a little bit more than a hundred feet wide, yes.
Okay, and that, that runs, that runs through there as well. And Ms. Riddell, you mentioned that your client does not own the property right now, that that is owned by...
That, that's Mayor, Councilmember Stip, that's correct. It works simply under contract, we do not own it right now.
Okay. So then, you know, I, I guess I wanna talk a little bit about, about property values, so I'm gonna look to the finance director, let's talk about property values for a minute, if you don't mind, Doug?
Well, I can answer that.
Because I, I, this question comes up, or that statement comes up very frequently, and I'm about property values, and we have put a lot of apartments up in the last, let's just say, five years, but I'm gonna go back probably to ten, but, last five years, what have the general property values been like in the city?
Sure. I'll answer that in two different ways. One, for our overall city valuation, we have, and that's all commercial, residential, everything included, our average increase is about about nine percent per year, and that is the limited property, property valuation, where the state actually does not allow currently assessed property to grow as fast as the market would be. So, overall, that's nine percent because of all the commercial and everything coming in, and in commercial, that would include non, would include apartments as commercial, because they're not single-family. When we look at just single-family residential for the city, in the last four years, the increase in full cash value, which is the assessor's version of market value, has been six point four percent on average every single year. The lowest that it has been, has been five percent in the last ten years.
So, proportionately, we're not seeing this decrease in property value.
Correct.
And the reason that I'm driving to that, for everyone sitting in the audience, the reason that I drive to that is, someone asked the question, have you, have we ever approved an apartment complex by where you live? And I have. I've done two of them, actually. Well, actually, I take that back, I've done one, and I voted no on the other, but it wasn't because it was an apartment complex, and I, I think that becomes the greater challenge of sitting up here, is trying to figure out where does that go? The other, the other thing that I bring to this particular council is, at one time, in the very recent past, I was one of these people who lived in a luxury apartment complex. Downsized, my kids moved out, downsized, didn't know, we're that baby boomer generation, what do we do? Get out of the big house. We lived in a small, or in a, in one of these luxury apartment complexes. The, the people that we interacted with in, in our complex were not the same kind of people that I interacted with when my wife and I were first married, in the apartment complexes that we lived in before we bought our first house. They're a bunch of people just like us, a bunch of people that were professionals, that were struggling to find down payments, but were making really good money, and could pay fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars a month, which is more than my mortgages right now, but they, they couldn't save the money because of their student loans or whatever to, to make a down payment. So, I, I think we need to be a little bit more understanding of who's living in an apartment. Not everybody is, you know, not everyone's a drug dealer, not everyone's a sex trafficker. Some of them are just good, they're just good old-fashioned people that are looking for a different alternative to live. And one of the other struggles, and I'll, I'll end this little speech here, and then I'll see if there's any other questions that pop up, but one of the things that we face as a council is, in the metro Phoenix area, about two hundred new people a day move into the, move into Maricopa County. That's, that's a lot of people, and they're going somewhere. Do they have to come here? No, they don't. I think they, they choose to come here for the very reasons that all of us moved here, and I moved here twenty years ago. The Valley right now is trying to produce about ten thousand to twelve thousand new multifamily units per year, which is, you do the math, two hundred people a day, three hundred, I mean, the, the numbers just don't add up. So, they're, they're, they're coming in, we didn't, we didn't reach our, you know, the ninth fastest-growing city in the country by, kind of by accident, it just, it happened. So, what do, we have this problem, what do we do with it? And I know everybody says, well, don't put it in my backyard, you can put it in someone else's backyard, and I absolutely respect that. And I, I think overall, when you look back at what the decisions we have to make, you know, someone made the comment, think of us, and this, I know I do, I'm not gonna speak for everybody else, but I think of you, and I think of my neighbors who aren't affected by this, and I also think of the people who live in Estrella, and the people who live out in Sudea. It's about the entire city, and what, what can we do, and what kind of balance do we bring, and, and that's the real struggle. For you, it's easy for us to say no to, and then you may think, well, it's easy to say yes to it, because, you know, the comment was made about, well, the money that we get, we're not, the city doesn't get a lot. We don't get, we'll get some development fee, but that pays for stuff that, that you all were worried about. It pays for the fire station that is right now in design at Harrison and Citrus, it pays for that, it continues to pay for all of the other amenities, and if you think about what you've experienced as a homeowner, your Goodyear city property taxes have not gone up. Our rate has remained the same, the value of your home has gone up, but our rate has been the same for the last five years, and it will continue to be that way because of what we've done for you as a community and these things that we, that we do. So, it, the decisions are not easy, I, you know, I, I guess I, I just look at, at what do we, what can we really, what really benefits us as a community as a, as a whole? And does this project benefit the city as a whole without a negative impact? And, and I think that is the debate that we will probably have forever. I'm not sure yet, I wanna hear from the rest of the council where, where we sit, whether this is a good viable product, project or not. I tend to believe that, that it is. I think the reason that we're looking at single-family, single-family rentals and the multifamily, multiple-story on this one location is because of you, as opposed to some of these other projects that we see that are all multi-story projects going forward. And we're gonna, we have a big problem to address in the city going down the road, and this may be a way to get us there, it may not be, I'm not sure. So, thanks for listening.
Councilman Laura Tano?
I have a couple more questions and then a comment. I think, Christian, this is probably for you, or maybe for Christopher, I'm not sure. What is the percentage of our housing stock, single-family versus rentals in the city? It's Christopher, isn't it?
Mayor, Councilman Laura Tano, thank you for that. As of July, excuse me, January twenty twenty-one, there were approximately thirty-three and a half thousand single-family homes in the city of Goodyear. We currently have approximately eight thousand, no, excuse me. Excuse me, what was that number? What was that number?
Sorry, I didn't...
I did the math this morning, excuse me. Yeah, it, it equates fifteen point two percent of our housing stock is multifamily, which includes the walk-up, and it also includes the single-family rentals, one-story, the MF twelves.
Is that what's built, or also what's in the pipeline?
That's what, that's what built, is what is built.
What we currently have, fifteen percent, what is the standard across the rest of the valley? Do we know that?
There isn't a standard, it's really community choice. Some, if the council may remember, we've done a couple of work sessions in previous years. Other communities in the East Valley, like Tempe and things of that nature, have a much higher number of multifamily units. Overall, Goodyear is a lower percentage than many other cities throughout the valley.
Okay.
And we can pull that information. Katie, if you can, if you wanna...
Sorry, I didn't need to blind sign Joe.
That's all right.
Here she comes.
So, I guess Katie's coming up to save the date.
Yeah, we can pull that, we can pull that from the previous council presentation we did.
Okay, I knew we had that before, I just kinda think that's kind of an important, wasn't sure what the numbers were.
Yeah, there you go, perfect. Thank you very much. And surprises, and Katie, this was, this was as of, do you remember? About last year? Yeah. This was last year, numbers. Surprise was about eight percent multifamily, Gilbert was about thirteen percent multifamily, Peoria approximately fifteen percent, Mesa approximately twenty-five percent, Chandler twenty-seven percent, and Tempe was fifty percent.
Yeah, okay.
So, we're about, we're about fifteen percent, right around, so we're on the lowest, lower side of those numbers.
Got it. Okay. I, I, I've heard what everyone said, and I heard what Councilmember Stip, and I think this is a really interesting conversation that we're, we're having about growth, and I think that's something that's very important. My background is, we moved to Arizona nineteen seventy-three, grew up in Moon Valley, Seventh Street and Thunderbird, we were the last street in North Phoenix, nothing there. Bell Road, anyone been to Bell Road? Two-lane road at the time. Coyotes, I mean, there was nothing there. I, I have seen the valley grow since then, since the seventies and the eighties. I went to college in the nineties and came back. When I grew up, you could not take I-ten to California, you had to drive through Grand Avenue and go all the way around. When my parents sold their house, they lived in an apartment. My dad was a professional, my mom was a stay-at-home mom at the time, and she was a professional. They lived at the point when they sold their house, luxury apartments. So, when I, I look at apartment buildings, I kinda try to look, is it a luxury apartment or what we're doing? I've also, was a prosecutor for Phoenix for like fifteen years. Part of my duty there, at one time, I was a community prosecutor, and we worked with slum lords. So, I get where the crime comes and where it doesn't come. And it's a blanket statement, it, it, apartments don't lead to crime. What happens with crime, it comes where people are. Whether it's a well-managed apartment, you're not gonna get crime. When you're talking rents at eighteen hundred or two thousand, over two thousand dollars, like Councilmember Stip said, that's more than my mortgage is. I mean, I don't pay that much for a mortgage, never have. So, I, I, I get the, kind of, the concern. I, I really do get the concern. We wanna make sure that we have the, the processes in place, that whatever is built there, because I know one of the problems that we're having in Goodyear and across the valley is some of these single-family rentals, not the ones you rent, but the ones you just rent from the investor that has bought ten, twenty homes in a valley and is turning them to Airbnb rentals. I know that's a big problem that many communities are facing right now, and they become the party homes. We've got one on the street right behind us that turns over and is a party home, because these people come in and, you know, and that's really hard to gauge, or you have the people in the single-family homes that, that rent, you know, for three months or six months, and they don't go through a background check. So, that was one question, do they go through a crime-free housing addendum?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Laura Tano, absolutely.
And what is that? Could you explain what that is?
Septed, it's, well, septed is the design parameters, but essentially, it's the background check that they have to go through, whether or not they've ever been convicted or even accused of a crime, and it's fairly detailed, as you know.
Okay. And, and I hope that gives people, however the vote turns out, if it, if it is approved for any apartments in the valley, that is something that's very important, that they go through that. And what that means is, if you have a felony, or if you have a certain drug conviction, you can't even get in these places. But, you can rent a house, if I want to rent my house and live somewhere else, there's no rules that say I can't. I think that's a problem with the system, and as some of these neighborhoods age, you see people buying, the last downturn, investors came in and just bought lots of these houses, and that, that is a real problem. I moved to Goodyear in nineteen ninety-three, and we were talking about lines at Fries, we, we had the one Fries that was the Goodwill, and that's the place we had to go, and that was the only store, you had to go to Seventy-Fifth Avenue to go to the store. So, I think we're getting restaurants, I agree a hundred percent, we need more, and we keep talking to our economic development, there is more stuff coming to that, especially to that Cotton Lane area. I also think that this is a really hard conversation to have, because I wish that a lot of times that the realtors, we do have problems with some of the, the realtors, and I wish we could make it known that when they sell a house, a lot of times, they'll say, this is your view, and this is how it's always going to be, and I don't think that's always appropriate for them to be doing, and I think that's kind of, that, I kind of find disheartening when people do that. With crime, I know we do have an uptick in crime, not just, it's not just apartments, it's everywhere. Like I said, we had someone who's stealing those catalytic converters is the big thing. You could park anywhere, and they'll come with a chainsaw and, or a little zip saw, and they'll take those out. We've had problems on our street, and, you know, and people just come down there, and I had my window with a BB shot out for no reason, and, and so I think that's unfortunately a lot of it, with the pandemic, we've seen crime increase throughout, unfortunately, and just with more people, more people moving here from other states. So, I, I think growth is good, but growth has to be managed, and I think it's important that we keep up with the police, the fire, the parks, the services in that area, like Councilmember Stip said, there's a fire station that is being built there, and that's very important, too, that we keep up with that as that grows, because our growth in this area, we're only ten percent build out, which means there's gonna be a lot more building coming, a lot more roads. Like I said, when I moved here, Estrella was a two-lane road, there, there was nobody on Estrella. So, there's going to be a lot more growth, it's gonna be west, and it's going to be south. Those are the two areas that we have to plan for, and that's, unfortunately, three oh-three isn't coming for several more years, and that's gonna help with that. So, I do appreciate everybody coming, and I'm interested to see the other thoughts of council members.
Just a minute, somebody has in the phone, come on and speak. Okay, go ahead, Brandon.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I went to high school here, too, so there's nine thousand people here when I first was going to high school here, so now there's a hundred thousand, so growth has always been a thing that I've dealt with here. So, it's been interesting, the topics on growth. I know I'm talking to the economists that we talked to, you need thirty thousand, or as many, we need a whole Goodyear for the next five years, a key pace of the growth that's coming here. Not that that's a reason to have more apartments, but just the growth is, is huge, and the expected growth is gonna keep coming here, and the way East Valley is getting full, and we're getting, it's, it's coming this direction, so. And I, I understand why this, this hybrid kind of approach that we're doing here with the, hopefully with a single-story, and then the three-story closer to the high school with having higher traffic. I had a question around Hundred Seventy-third, I know we got that beautiful new light that's off of Yuma now, what's, what's the lights gonna look like around, do we know yet?
Style of light?
You mean design?
Light, any lights, streetlights, where will the entrances be to this, this area? Do we know the cuts over the area, the...
On this property, on the, on the multifamily property? That will be determined at site plan, where the entrance into the development is.
Okay, so we don't know if there's gonna be a light there yet, Hundred Seventy-third, or...
That's correct.
Okay. And we don't know, I mean, I know to one person's point, they say that people will cross over from El Cidro and this, and whatever's gonna be here, and cross over up Hundred Seventy-third to kind of catch the freeway there versus taking Cotton. I'm not sure if there's anything we can do to slow down traffic there, except have more police or speed bumps in that general area, but, yeah, so I'm not sure if you have any advice on, on traffic patterns in that general area or not, but...
When the three oh-three is improved, there will be ramps at Yuma, and there will be ramps at Elwood, those are the programmed ramps in this area, as well as frontage roads, but that will come when the freeway is...
Yeah, 'cause, yeah, 'cause this'll all be frontage roads to get, if you go to the three, if you go to where the entrance to the three oh-three for this areas right now, it'll be all frontage roads to get to two oh-four, a diamond, a diamond entrance.
Correct, at Yuma, yes, correct.
Okay. Anything else? I mean, I do appreciate the setbacks that you were, the two forty in the distance. How, how high is the tallest power line right now going through that general, that, I know it's gonna be a power line area there?
Yes, ma'am, we're looking into that.
I used to live in a neighborhood where they called them the Eiffel Towers, which were the, the power lines.
Much taller than.
Directly behind my house, so, yeah. That's what the realtor told me. They were.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm not sure the exact, they're, I mean, very tall, but I don't know that I can give you an exact height for that.
Anybody here on staff answer that? All right, please come forward.
I was curious.
Is it a sixty?
I know they're the bigger, I don't know.
Hold it, we got staff coming forward.
The sixty-nine K?
They're the, they're. Mayor, Council, thank you. As Christian and Ms. Riddell pointed out, don't have that exact figure, but I can tell you that the two-thirty KV lines are approximately a hundred and thirty feet tall. Those are the ones that you see, like, on the north side of Indian School in front of the Sadea Community.
Van Buren.
Or, yeah, and, correct.
That's the good example we use, all the way down that housing community.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, this might help. We actually pulled it. It's actually ninety-five feet tall.
There you go.
Ninety-five.
A little shorter than what I was saying, but yes.
Okay. So that hundred-foot area easement is all that power line? Okay. Yeah, I just want some more clarification around it. Wait, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Cano?
Councilmember Loretano referenced this about the crime, but I think that has definitely been a loud and clear reoccurring theme, fears about crime that this apart, these apartments might, might bring. And it didn't come up tonight as much as it did in the work session about graffiti, homelessness, and, and things like that. So I'm, I'm thinking about all the new and long-term apartments we have here. We have many well-established, decades-old apartments, and that I think between code and law enforcement, we are not seeing graffiti, homeless havens and, and such. But is there any information about apartment crime, or any, anything that can be shared about what we're seeing with the increasing of multifamily housing in Goodyear?
Chief is going to come forward and talk. Thank you, Chief, I'm ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Cano. So I can't speak to what other states or other cities or anything like that. However, I can't say that there is a correlation, there's any worse crime in an apartment complex than there is in a residential neighborhood. I can tell you that we have a safe community, and we have officers out there that are still proactive, teams that are out there proactive, like our hot team and, and so forth, our community service unit that's out there, that works with all of the community to combat crime. Once again, I have no data to show that any crime at an apartment complex is worse than any crime that's happening inside of a residential area.
So just as the density increases, we're seeing a commensurate increase?
Yeah, so there is. Anecdotally, when you have one address and you have a density population that lives there, you could get, you know, some calls for service that are maybe loud-type calls for service, or the person above me is being loud, the person next to me being loud. Although many times, that is not a case. That's just a matter of making contact and letting them know, just like we would do in a residential neighborhood also.
Great. You referenced the hot team, which is an acronym, and can you just briefly say what the hot team does?
Yes, that's our homeless outreach team. It's comprised of officers that go around and contact anybody that is homeless, or that might be stranded or needs help. And then they use the resources that they have to help those people move on. Sometimes it's just somebody traveling from one state to the other, but ends up here and has issues.
Okay.
Just tell them the total number of homelessness we, on the count.
Yeah, I believe it's thirteen was our last count, and the one prior to that was twenty-two, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I, I do live in an area where there is a older, established apartment that's been there a long time, and then there was an empty field that I walk my dogs through, which is now a brand-new apartment. So I understand the transitions that come when apartments arrive in your neighborhood. In my neighborhood, when I see people leaving, I see military, I see students, I see, in one of the complexes, there's a Goodyear police officer. There are people who are moving here from out of state that either are unable to find, buy homes right now, that are looking to, to be established. I think we're all grieving the loss of that open space here, the fields. I think that was always so peaceful, as it was mentioned about, about that. But again, we've, we're in a city that's a relatively young city, seventy-five years old, with eleven percent built out. So I, I think we're going to just continue to see that massive growth, especially as businesses and people are, are coming into Arizona, and we're, we're certainly drawing a lot of businesses from California. In the work session presentation, the, from the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, there was discussion about how Goodyear has been well-positioned to attract businesses and companies here. And one of that, one of the things that they stated was a important factor was the diversity of the housing products, and that we do have something for people who, who need places to live and who can afford, because everything we have, I think, is market rate. And so we have clustered some around the transportation corridors, but there's also spreading it out into a community. And I think that it is a good companion project next to the high school. I think it, it, it fits well there, and it will, just looking at, again, the amenities, the, the, the work that's gone into it, these, the single-story, or single-family rentals seem to work pretty well here, and we certainly do have a lot of them. And I think this project has merit.
Councilman Basile?
No, I was just going to mention those similar apartments that are on the street behind me. I've really noticed no increase in traffic out of those, as far as when I'm traveling in the morning to school. What I tell you where the traffic's coming from is the school. That's why I was asking questions about the school, because we don't have any say-so in the school on how that design goes in or their traffic flow. The, the school that's near where, where I live, it's got a lot of traffic, because it just happens to be one of those charter schools, which has no bus service or whatever. So that's where all our traffic's coming from. But to be honest with you, I think where our next biggest challenge is going to be in the, in the housing, is because people are renting their houses out. I know in our neighborhood, we've had some complaints where they rent these things out for several thousand dollars a week, and they turn them into party homes. And with the, what is it, the Super Bowl coming up, I suspect that issue's going to be another one. But there's big bucks in that, and, and they're in neighborhoods, and unfortunately, the state took that away from us. We don't have any control over those short-term rentals, and, which I think is a mistake. I'm hoping that we can get some control over that, because I'm hearing it from the neighbors all the time, because there is a, a value out there for those homes. So again, traffic-wise, I have the experience that I've got them, somebody says you wouldn't have any, I've got two of them. So they don't seem to be a problem, mainly because of the quality of the rent they're getting and the quality of the people that are getting in there. I started out in the apartment, and like Councilmember Stip had mentioned, the people that I'm seeing in there aren't the ones that were in there when I was in there, okay? And the biggest complaints we had was the noise you would hear up above or the sides. That's why I think the big demand for the single rentals, single-story rentals, because you have a backyard, and you don't have to worry about the person on top of you or next to you. So, yeah, I, I can appreciate it, but I think some of the times, the misnomers on the apartments in, at least in this city, I don't think is in that area. I really don't. At least, that's been my experience.
Next? Anybody want to repeat? Are we finished with the discussion? So the mayor now will, will talk. First of all, all of this is market, market-driven.
Yes.
And for years, we have not had enough apartment complexes in Goodyear. Part of it was, we didn't have the density. So let's talk about density, and we talk about the comment he made about the restaurants. You want good restaurants here, you want to be, sit down. Do you know how long we've worked on it? Since I've been on this council and our economic, it's a daily job. And the answer was, why we didn't get the regional shopping center? Because we didn't have enough density. We didn't have enough people on the streets. We did not have enough cars on the street. You did not see people carrying big bags of, of things that they bought in the store. We didn't have any of that. We could have stayed exactly where we were, one restaurant, two restaurants. This has been an absolutely long, hard trail to get what we have now. And have we stopped? Absolutely not. Just the economic development, working on it every day. Do we have a list of how many restaurants people want, whoops, all the things they want? Do we watch that list? Do we work on that list all the time? Yes. So as far as that comment is. Secondly, and people hate me to say this, and I, but I'm going to say it one more. I've had people say, Mayor Lord, I don't want to hear this. So this is how it goes. I sold new homes in, in Virginia, in Maryland, in those areas. And I used to tell my clients, well, they would say, there's a space behind my house. What's that going to be? And I say, it can be anything. The only thing you have control about is the plat that they gave you at your closing. Anything else that's bare, you don't. Even though your agent said, oh, don't worry, there's going to be a big house there, it's going to be here. Planning and zoning is done as the, as the communities become bigger, more people there, more need there. And so that's what happens. I know I can see people going like this, but it, it's the way it runs, and it runs that way throughout the cities. Let's talk about apartment houses. I'm from Michigan, and my dad, I rest in Detroit. I've been to Chicago, I've been to New Jersey, I've been all those places. And when these developers come in to me and talk about it, I said, I don't want to look like Chicago. I don't want to look like Detroit. I don't want to look like New York. I do not want the apartment's health, and I want to start seeing better elevations on the outside, and I want it safe. We can't stop the growth here. We can't stop the cars and knock on their windows and say, I'm sorry, you can't come to Goodyear, we're filled up. So that, again, market-driven, weather-driven. Many of these people are coming here because they've had awful storms and destruction storms in the other parts, so they're coming to Goodyear. So I understand your love of your house, I understand the sacrifices you've put into it. My husband and I moved twenty-two times. So I finally, we finally got a house we stayed in for a number of years. So I know the love of it, and I know what, how much it means to you. So I'm just going to tell you that you sound like you're a very strong neighborhood with lots of good ideas and lots of dedication, and you can be a part of that neighborhood if and when these problems start to happen. You can be partners with the city. You can call us. We can help you. We can do as much as we can at the time. We are available. Our police department's available, our fire department's available. We have plans from our fire department that go to individual homes when they need medical help. We have so many programs for the people in Goodyear, and this council has been working for the quality of life for your city. We don't fill our pockets. That's been mentioned about, oh, the, the city and, and the council fills their pockets. I don't fill my pockets. I do so much work for a small amount that I make, because we love the city and we want it to be quality. And so that's why that new recreational department has been built. If you haven't been there, you need to go see it. And we are going to focus on all the parts of the city and try to improve the area. So I know you're disappointed, but finally I have to tell you this, because most of my people say, I don't want to hear it, Mayor. You can't buy a view, they're not for sale. When you buy a house, you have an apartment building, whatever it is, that view's not for sale. What's for sale is what you, plat that you live on. So you hear that all the time, especially in mountain areas, and, and people, you know, and maybe your sales rep told you that, but your sales rep didn't tell you the truth. So, again, I really appreciate you coming and expressing all your feelings. I'm not sure what the end result's going to be, and we're going to be voting on it in a moment. But once more, thank you for your behavior. I greatly appreciate it. Okay, any other discussion? All right, we're going to vote on this. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, ayes have it. Yeah, can't we just go ahead and do the ordinance on that, and we'll be done with this? All right? Okay. Will the city clerk please read an ordinance number twenty, twenty-one dash fifteen zero eight by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen oh eight, conditionally rezoning approximately forty acres from R-16 Single Family Residential to MF twelve Multifamily on the eastern nineteen point eighteen acres, and MF twenty-four Multifamily on the western twenty point nine five acres. Adopting findings, amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgment, correction severability, and effective date and penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion second to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fifteen zero eight? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Basile, and a second from Councilwoman Stip. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All in here to say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we're going to take a break, okay, because before we start the regular meeting. Because before we start the regular meeting. I hope you enjoyed the break. We're on number 12. The next item is a public hearing to consider rezone approximately 12.7 acres from commercial pad, that's a planned area development. C2 general commercial to MF-24 with Canyon Trails Town Center Residence Development. Regulations M24 with pad overlay. Open the public hearing. Christian Williams, planner, to present. Christian?
Good evening. I'm here before you this evening with a request from Brian Greathouse and Ed Bull to conduct a rezoning on a property within the city. The property is located in central Goodyear and is approximately 12.7 acres and is located at the southeast corner of Cotton Lane and Canyon Trails Boulevard. That's approximately one half of a mile or half a mile north of Yum Road. The property is currently zoned commercial PAD, planned area development, and commercial, general commercial C2 as part of the Canyon Trails Phase 1 PAD. For a reference, that site is at the star right here. You can see Cotton Lane, which is the future SR303 and Canyon Trails Boulevard. Zooming in a little closer, you can see that the project is west of Planet Fitness and Big Box Stores. It is east of Cotton Lane Trail and the future State Route 303 Loop. And it is south of future Aviata at Canyon Trails. You'll recall that rezoning case from a few months ago. And it is north of the Canyon Trails Town Center and some additional pad sites that are located on that site. So again, the site we're talking about is this red area right here. There's Planet Fitness. Oopsie. Yeah. Oh, I just wanted to show you this zoomed out map a little bit. This is the site again, so it's vacant. It was once envisioned to be a big box home store. And this is the Copper Trails School. So you can see that there's the Canyon Trails Green Belt here. Fancy Targets down here. And the homes are over there. My favorite Target, by the way. So for a little history on the property, and I'm going to be, give you the abbreviated version because Canyon Trails is very big and a little bit confusing. But in 1999, which is the middle zoning map, the project was zoned as part of Canyon Trails Phase 1 Planned Area Development. And this site had an underlying zoning of residential uses. Approximately nine acres were designated for townhouses and four acres were designated for court homes. In 2005, the 91 acres we now know as Canyon Trails Town Center, of which this 12.7 acre parcel is a part of, was rezoned from commercial, to commercial, from multifamily, townhomes, court homes, commercial, and single family. For reference, the area originally only had 22 acres of commercial. So just the point on this map where we were, you had 22 acres. The site we're talking about is up here. And this entire area in 2005 became the Canyon Trails Town Center. Today's proposal requests to zone a portion of the Canyon Trails Town Center to MF24, multifamily 24, to create a horizontal mixed-use center. Many of you have previously asked about the loss of commercial in the Canyon Trails area. I'm going to exclude the 19 acres that are now a part of the 303 and 10 interchange. And the original Canyon Trails called for approximately 146 acres of commercial to be developed within this 1,800 acre master plan community. And 2005, approximately 247 acres were designated for commercial after the Canyon Trails Town Center rezon. If today's rezoning is approved, there will still be approximately 204 acres of commercial property within Canyon Trails, which is 58 acres more than were originally planned back in 1999. The zoning map highlights Canyon Trails development and within this rezon. So this map here highlights the Canyon Trails rezoning. The site we're referring to here today is located right here. So you can see how we got to this point. As it relates to other multifamily in the area, I did show this map a few minutes ago, but I'll just reemphasize what's on it. In the area of Goodyear between McDowell Road on the north and the future SR30 on the south and Perryville on the west, Bullard on the east, there are eight established multifamily communities. There are seven under development or recently completed. And as of the last case, there are 15 zoned for multifamily. Seven are likely single-family rental. Six are likely garden-style. Remember, one of them is a half and a half, so really seven. And two are part of city center, which will likely need to be rezoned in the future. The star on this map right here is the Canyon Trails Town Center residences, so you can see it in correlation to the other properties. The applicant requests to rezon the property to MF24 with a PAD overlay. The basis for the rezoning is the city's MF24, which permits a maximum of 24 units per acre. The use of the PAD overlay is justified as the current development standards for MF24 zoning districts do not address some of the unique circumstances that are found within this horizontal mixed-use development. I'll highlight some of those major changes that are proposed within the PAD overlay. Starting with setbacks in landscaping. As the entire property line falls within the private streets, so as you can see, there's a dashed line that goes into the middle of these drive aisles. The setbacks are clarified to include that a minimum of 10 feet of landscaping will be installed between the private streets and the buildings. The east rear setback has been reduced down to 10 feet from 20 to provide more continuity between the existing commercial and the future residential to provide a more mixed-use feel. Moving on to recreation and open space, the PAD overlay requests a reduction in the open space per dwelling unit from 400 square feet per unit down to 275 square feet per unit. The developer is also asking for a small deviation in the patio balcony size. The proposed reduction in open space is made up for in the quality amenities offered, and that's going to be stipulated in the PAD document, PAD overlay document, and the scale of the open space provided. The residential buildings will be centered around a large amenity core, which will include a clubhouse, fitness center, resort-style pool, outdoor kitchen, and a lounge area. And an additional large outdoor amenity will be provided at the southeast corner of the site. So that is right here. So that's Planet Fitness for reference. So the southeast corner of the site, there'll be an open amenity that'll have passive and active recreation and a dog park in that area. Residents of Canyon Trails Town Center will also have direct access to the expansive multi-use path, which will be on the west side of the property, and that's called the Cotton Lane Green Belt Trail. That will run from approximately Lower Buckeye Road on the south up to the RID near I-10 on the north. Additionally, there will be at least four pedestrian connections to the adjacent shopping area, which will encourage that mixed-use feel and allow residents to easily access and walk to nearby shopping. The developer is also requesting, asking to follow the noise standards that align with ADOT requirements. And parking in this development will be provided for via a mix of garages, tandem parking in the front of the garage, covered parking, open parking and tandem parking. That's similar to the district at Civic Square, having that tandem concept. In order for the city to approve that and have some assurances on how parking will be managed, as part of the site plan, they will have to provide a parking plan that the city approves with the site plan. So an example of a tandem space, just as a reminder, can be seen in that central image here where you have the garage and then you have a tandem space in front of it. Additionally, in order to ensure the buildings are visually interesting, architecturally unique, and do not appear like a big C of the same type of building across the site, the developer will provide at least four color options, as well as provide other features to visual, that will create that visual interest. At least three base colors will be used and one accent color will be used throughout the site. The combination of these colors and accents shall be created in a manner to create a minimum of two unique building schemes throughout the site. This will ensure that the site does, again, does not appear to be just one giant box repeating all over itself. And ground floor facades facing south and east adjacent to commercial centers shall not extend more than 30 feet without having some visual element change, pop-out, texture, color, things of that nature. And the development will have to be cohesive with the styles and themes found within the Canyon Trails Town Center and have a Canyon Trails name within it. And the central amenity will need to appear prominent from the center so that they look like there's some visual cohesiveness and it's not an apartment complex that got there that looks very different from the center. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, one resident spoke in opposition. The concern was proximity to single-family homes. Staff has evaluated the impact of this proposed rezoning on the greater community and with no major concerns being found, staff recommends you approve the rezoning of this property from commercial planned area development slash general commercial C2 to MF24 with Canyon Trails Town Center residences, planned area development overlay, and subject to the stipulations of the staff report. overlay and subject to the stipulations of the staff report. The applicant is here.
Speak. Okay. Bring them forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Ed Bull, 1850 North Central Avenue. First of all, we agree with everything Christian just said and agree with everything in staff's report. We appreciate the recommendations for approval from both staff and the Planning Commission, and we accept all eight stipulations that are included in the draft ordinance. Usually, I do most all the talking, I suppose, or I'd say, may I shut up and sit down? Tonight, what I would like to do, Mayor, with your permission and permission of others of the council, I'd like to introduce or reintroduce a couple people to you all. They're both here, and I don't know if they need to speak two minutes apiece, or three, or four, or whatever it is, but I would rather you hear from them than from me. Because one of them who's here to speak is David Mallon, who some of you remember, has been involved with Canyon Trails Downtown Center since back in its zoning days, like 15 years ago, and was involved putting the initial shovel in the ground, and then everybody went away for a while, and then he's been asked to come back and reinvigorate this center, which we've discussed, Mayor, with you and Julie and some other staff, two and a half, three years ago, some ideas on some things to do. And part of what he did is had a knowledge and experience elsewhere of, we needed to do something to re-energize this center, and bringing in a top-notch multifamily development up at the north end where we could provide the integrated vertical mixed-use that Christian talked about and has written up in the staff report. That was an important part of it. David can talk with you in as much detail as you want, or maybe more than you want, about the beauty pageant he had to decide who that multifamily developer would be. And he chose Embry, chose him for good reason. As you may know, they were here in the valley pre-Great Recession. They're back here post-Great Recession, and then, and now. They're known for high quality. They're known for not being bashful about spending money on architecture and design, and multiple colors and other kinds of things. It's so important. This site is one, before I hand it over to David and then to Jimmy, is one that, as you know, has been challenged from the get-go. Part of that's timing. Part of it's probably that the thing is just too big at 90-plus acres for retail in the world we've been living in, are living in, and will live in. It won't be this site at the far north end. It was supposed to be at Home Depot. It wasn't. It won't be. It's not going to be another anchor. It's not going to be little boutique shops. You're not going to want single-family homes there. I'm pretty sure about that. And I don't think you want industrial there. Multifamily is the right use, and in addition, multifamily brings in the integrated mixed-use, which this council has encouraged in some other locations, and is the type of thing that Christian was talking about. Exactly the thing that both David and Jimmy can talk about was part of what they brought to the table in some other cities that had some of the same challenges in centers. David Mallon was with Vestar back in the day. He's now a consultant to the existing shopping center owner. He can tell you as much or more than you want to know about the past, present, and future of this center. He can tell you why Home Depot didn't work and how it is that the son of Home Depot isn't going to come to this site. He can talk with you about boutique shops as far north won't work, and why it is that there's still a lot of land. If you're inclined to approve this, there's still a lot of land in this shopping center that could be used for anchors, mini-anchors, or boutique shops and pads. He can talk with you about the fact that this change in use on this acreage is so important that he needed to reach out to the four anchors in the center and get their approval before changing the use, and he's done that. He can also talk with you about examples that he's been involved in in other cities as to how this technique of bringing in high-end multifamily has worked, and why he believes it'll work here. You can pull up a PowerPoint if you want and go through some of the other slides, but I think, again, I think that David and Jimmy McCloskey from Embry are the ones you really want to hear from. Jimmy can talk about how the seriousness that they've taken with this site and working with staff and the architects and the quality, it's top-notch. It's a $70 million proposed investment of putting into the city and putting into this center. The architecture, the colors, the amenities, other kinds of things. They're committed to being a high-quality developer, contractor, and manager of this property. He too can talk about examples. Mayor, with your permission, if I may, I'd like to sit down, turn it over to David, and then Jimmy. If there's any time left for rebuttal, I'll use it as best I can, or if I simply need to sit and listen, I trust these guys to let you know what they know and answer your questions as well as they can.
You have my permission.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm David Mallon, 3821 East Devonshire Avenue in Phoenix. It's good to be here. The last time I was before you, Mayor Lord, was in 2006. And at the time, I was before you asking for approval of this PAD so that we could build a 90-acre shopping center. Well, back then, we couldn't build them big enough. And we had a long list of tenants that wanted to be here, and after we received your approval, we broke ground, and by the end of 2007, we all know what happened. The world shifted. We eventually called it the Great Recession, and when that happened, in the middle of our construction, Kohl's walked away, Marshall's walked away, Old Navy walked away, and Home Depot told us they would never build a store here. So we call it missing teeth. You see the building envelope of the boxes and the missing boxes? We had a lot of missing teeth, and the center was broken. And we just tried to keep it afloat for another five years we lasted, holding it up. But eventually, we sold it. We sold it in 2013 to the current owner today, Trigate. Trigate Capital is out of Dallas. And they bought it, and they just held on to it, and they kept it on life support for four years. 2017, Home Depot sold the dirt back to Trigate. They were never, never going to build the store. By then, what had happened in the world of retail is if you were going to build a shopping center, there's no way you could build one 90 acres. You couldn't even build one 50 acres. It's unheard of. In fact, in the state of Arizona, there hasn't been a new Target store, a new Home Depot store. None of these larger anchors, we haven't seen any of them since 2008. What they do now is they build small stores in urban areas or near campuses, and that's what they do. So when my construction days ended with the recession, what Vestar, what I did from then going forward was we learned how to fix broken centers. And I'm going to give you an example of a center that's like the poster child of a broken power center, and it is the, it's the twin of Canyon Trails, and it's located in Denver. It's called Orchard. It's 100 acres. Ours here is 90 acres. It had Target, Ross, PetSmart, same as here. And Vestar, we bought that center in 2015, and we, by then, we figured out how to fix these centers, and the way to fix them is to convert them from purely retail into mixed-use projects, bring in other uses. And it all started with multifamily. If you can bring in the density, bring in the warm bodies, the residents, their amenities to the retail, and then the retail was the amenity to the multifamily, and they worked together very well. And when we tried to create these mixed-use environments, we wanted entertainment, we wanted restaurants, we wanted hotel, in addition to just the retail and the multifamily, and if you can plan for all of it on one site, you can fix it. So we did this. I did this twice in Denver. Once at the Orchard, 30-minute drive away from the city downtown Denver, just like Goodyear is to Phoenix, growth area, and we did it. We brought in a multifamily project, and the minute you have the approval from the zoning, then we're cut loose to change the story, change the narrative. We can go out to the retailers. We can tell a different story now. We're going to have all these units. We're going to have all these bodies. And then, all of a sudden, things start to shift. Restaurants want to be there. You've been talking about restaurants for hours. I have six restaurants, signed contracts right now, or leases. Right now, national brands, guys that wouldn't talk to me 10, 12 years ago. They're ready to go if we get this approval. It's all hinging on bringing in the warm bodies. That's what they need to see. And as soon as we can bring in those new restaurants, then we can go out to some boxes. Then we have something to tell them, how things have changed. Look at our center. Mixed use, multifamily, hotel, restaurants. Then we can get in these boxes. At Orchard up in Denver, as soon as we got the approval, we went out, we talked to boxes. I made a Marshall's deal. I made an Nordstrom Rack deal. I'd have never had that chance without the mixed use. So that's kind of why I was hired by Trigate in 2019. They hired me to come back and fix this center. This Canyon Trails is like one of my children. I raised it from inception, and I want to finish the job, and so I'm asking you to let me finish the job. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about what I've been doing for two years. I came in and said hello to you, Mayor Lord, about two years ago, to explain what my goal was, to have this project finally reach its fullest potential, and step one was multifamily. Well, after that meeting, what we did was, we had to set out and identify the right multifamily developer. And so I hired a consultant with Lee &amp; Associates, two guys very successful in identifying multifamily developers for projects, and we ran a process. We went out, reached out to the market. We prepared a real nice package, sent it out. We had eight offers for this parcel, eight different multifamily developers. I personally interviewed every one of them. We chose Embry. They were not the highest bidder. They were, without question, the most experienced and the highest-quality developer, and that's why we chose Embry. We knew it was going to be a year-long process, and that we were going to be here today, before you, after working with staff for months. And so we had, if we were going to pick somebody, need to be somebody we felt had the best chance of success, to be that, that piece of the puzzle in the project, because when you step back and you look at Canyon Trails Town Center, you held our feet to the fire. You wanted upgraded architecture, upgraded design. You, you didn't want an everyday run-of-the-mill project. So now we need a multifamily developer that meets that high level, that standard that you made sure we set for the center, and that's what Embry is. The second thing that's happened over two years is I then had to call the four anchors, Target, Ross, PetSmart, Planet Fitness. And the reason I had to call them is they have leases, and in those documents, it says that everything in the project has to be retail. Well, we want to change this to mixed-use, to residential. So I called up my friends in Minneapolis at Target, and who I had just been through Orchard with. We turned around that center. We fixed it. They had the confidence in me that I could do it again. They agreed. They approved this residential component. Same thing with Ross. They approved it. PetSmart approved it, and Planet Fitness did. And so all of these real estate committees approved it. We spent two years negotiating documents with these folks, and now they're executed. They're ready to go. They know that it'll never be retail. It can never be retail. So that's a lot of heavy lifting we did, a lot of time and effort and money and resources, where these retailers are now, now they, they've bought, they've bought in. They're, they're all in on this. There's one other issue I wanted to address that Ed touched on, and that is, even without this 12.7 acres, we still have 77 acres of retail, and that's a lot. Today, at this moment, there's 160, 160,000 square feet of buildable area for boxes in our building envelope, the missing teeth. That's four 40,000-square-foot boxes. We haven't made one of those deals in 15 years. We have four that we can do, even without this apartment community. The shops area, we built four of those buildings. We have the entitlement to build eight. There's four more yet to be built, 60,000 square feet of shop space. If we, if there was tenant demand, we can still build without the 12.7 acres of multifamily. And then the out parcels, the pads, there are still five pads. That's 50,000 square feet of pad buildings, of deals we could still do, even without the multifamily. So we have all this opportunity that we hope we can achieve for boxes, shops, and pads on 77 acres. That's more than enough for retail. So to think that there's going to be some shop building up in this area, or a box up in this area, or a pad, we have other areas for that already that are, that there's lots of room for. So with that said, I can answer whatever questions you might have, or I can hand it over to Jimmy McCloskey to continue.
My speak moment?
Sure, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jimmy McCloskey, Embry Partners, 1020 Northeast Loop, San Antonio, Texas. I'd like to thank you for your time. I know it's been a long night, and so we're excited to be here. Embry is a, is a family-owned company. We're based in San Antonio, Texas. We've been in business for nearly 50 years, and Walter Embry, who started the company when he was in his mid-20s, is still there. He was there today, and, and very active in the business. One of the things at Embry that we really focus on is just high barriers to entry locations, and for us, in the town of Goodyear, this was the location that we kind of, we found through the help of the folks that David mentioned. And, you know, we look for a few things, and, and one of those is, it's kind of an acronym that I use. It's called the Avenue Approach. So good access, good visibility, and a great environment. And so this site kind of checks all three boxes there. You know, we don't do 20 or 30 apartment projects a year. We really focus on about six to eight starts from Phoenix all the way out to Tampa and Orlando, up to Charlotte and Nashville, Denver, Colorado, and all through Texas. So of those markets, we really try and focus on locations like the one we're talking about tonight. And what we've found is these types of locations have a lot of success because of the synergy created between the uses that David did a great job kind of communicating with the council and to the folks here. And so what we've found, and David mentioned the Orchard, I actually tried to get that site, but I didn't, I didn't win that one, because I covered Denver. We found that out about, you know, after about a year of working together that we were, I was looking at that site about a couple of years ago. But in this particular site, it reminds me a lot of some sites we've done actually here in the valley. So the Flats at Santan in Gilbert, Arizona, is a project that we did, and we recently completed a few years ago. Riada, next to the Chandler Fashion Center Mall, that's another project that we've done here locally, this one. And I've done others in Denver and in Austin, San Antonio. And so we're excited to be here. We know that it's a big change. But, you know, one of the things in working with Christian and the staff, and they've done an incredible job, not just, you know, in kind of working with us, but kind of holding our feet to the fire and making sure the city gets what they need. One of the biggest advantages that I really haven't had many opportunities to do is that park area that Christian pointed to in the southeast corner of the site. That's really generated by an easement. So in all honesty, there's an easement there that Planet Fitness, I think it's Planet Fitness requires to kind of get out to Cotton. And so we could have put, you know, just parking there. We could have done a lot of things there, but we really thought this is an opportunity to kind of create a synergy that we, we benefit from, you know, because we can have our folks that can go there and let their dog run around, or it's, it's a sizable area in an urban or suburban slash urban environment that we're creating. And so to me, that type of- And so to me, that type of, uh, attention to detail that our team, uh, worked with Christian and their team, and, um, and then also David, there's some uniqueness there that even this site has that others that I've worked on, uh, don't. And so, um, anyway, we're excited to be here, like I said, and of course, we can field any questions that you may have. And, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, all right, did you call the names on, please?
Linda Esposito.
Hi, Mayor Lord and City Council members, my name is Linda Esposito, and I'm a Goodyear resident. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about this apartment complex. I wanna outline the reasons why I oppose this project and why this apartment building is really not a good fit for this retail, retail center. There's an anticipation there'll be 430 residents that will be living in the 284 unit apartments. Uh, of those, 141 are projected to be kids. So that leaves 289 people that will be supporting this community or this apartment, uh, su- sustaining this, uh, shopping center. So I think that, uh, when we think about the other apartment complexes directly above, uh, across from it, there's 418 units there will be, uh, provided there. And it's about up to two times the amount of this complex. So a lot of this, um, synergy that I'm seeing may be related to that as well, that they're seeing more people. So I wouldn't say that this is the saving grace of that shopping center. Uh, currently, there are six fast food restaurants with a family-owned pizza place and a sit-down sushi grill, sushi and grill restaurant. There's six more, uh, restaurants that are coming, we don't know what they are. But if they're fast food, that's not a whole lot of options for eating, if you wanna eat a good family meal, sit-down restaurant. There hasn't been any talk about how the traffic is gonna be affected by this influx of the 418 units, as well as this community. And also, this apartment complex, uh, has a lot of amenities it's gonna offer, one is a fitness center. How is that gonna, uh, address, uh, the Planet Fitness, Orange Theory and Club Pleiades, uh, in that current shopping center? Are they gonna be able to, you know, leave their facility and go to ours? Would they, would they want to do that? If they can do everything they want right in their own community? The apartment complex does not fit in the space that they're proposing, there's some deviations that you've heard about already. The, the, uh, request to, you have a setback of 20 feet rather than 30 feet, that's a 10 feet shorter than the MF4 24 standards. Uh, the recreation space that was requested has been asked to be reduced from 400 square feet to 100, 275 square feet. That's a 50% reduction right there, but they're gonna boost that with amenities that are internal. That's, that's like kind of putting your eight, eight, a size eight shoe and a size six, uh, foot and a size six shoe, in my opinion. And they're asking to allow the new DOT requirements for, for the LEGs. And, um, that's a big, uh, variation in my opinion as well. It the, uh, it allows for the one LEG higher outside, but, on the outside, but inside, they're asking for a seven percent, a seven-point difference, LE, seven LE, LEG difference, and that's 14.4% louder. So when you think about that in the ways of sound. I thought the good general, the, the general, the goal of the general plan was to provide a compatibility mix of land uses that fosters quality, community and livable, safe environments. The 418 unit and this 284 unit will have a gated community. Everything that's beside that is already open, we don't have a gated community there. So where does that leave us in our, in our quest for safety and a safe environment? Um, also, there's additionally, and you've heard this already, there are seven multifamily communities already planned with another eight planned, and one was proved tonight. Where does that end? Where does the density need to be for a Goodyear to say, yeah, we're done? You know, I support the growth of Goodyear, I wasn't, I didn't have a problem with the 14, 418 unit, because that's combined, it's on one area. Putting this in a shopping center just doesn't make sense. It, it, it's, you know, it's like living in your, in your car in the parking lot and then walking across the street. And I understand, this is gonna be a high, high, uh, level, you know, high, you know, amenities, expensive and things like that, but really, is it, are we, is that community or is that shopping center that high class? It needs an upgrade, face and everything. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I've let you go all the time, because I'm wondering if any hearing would be fair to you, thank you. Are there any speaker cards other than that?
Yes, Mayor, Ron Childers.
Good evening, uh, Mayor.
Ron, I have to tell you an idea.
Um, so.
That's okay.
I, uh, basically, you know, everything that Linda stated, but also just wanted to mention that we, as she stated, like the seven or eight, um, areas that are gonna be set up for multifamily apartments, to me, would seem like it would get that population density that we need for the city. And honestly, I mean, I, I get what he was saying about the retail, of who would be there as far as, you know, Home Depot, uh, Home Depot doesn't show up, who else could be? Well, actually Costco, because Costco being the fact that it's, you know, we have several Costcos up north around the I-17, and they're so close to each other, we probably have enough population for this area in Buckeye, four Costco in that area. Another problem is, we only have three, four gas stations in the area. And at least three of them, two or three are on, uh, Estrella and I-10, and the other one is basically the Fry's on, uh, Yuma. Um, if you have more population density in there, you're gonna have more people, obviously more cars and no gas stations go to. Uh, we would need more of those too, but, you know, Costco offers that too. But I'm not saying it's just Costco. In fact, you know, people stating the fact that they want more restaurants, sit-down restaurants instead of fast food, because we don't know what those six restaurants are. And it's glad, you know, it's nice that they have people that are, you know, signing contracts and are gonna be bringing restaurants, but we don't know what type they're gonna be, so with that land, it may not, it may not be another retail store that goes into that place, but you could have a slew of other sit-down restaurants in that location, multitude of them, because I've seen that in Indianapolis, I've seen that in Vegas, I've seen other parts in Phoenix, where you have like a row or an area of multiple restaurants that could put into that location. To me, it, it seems kind of like, if we change that from commercial to residential, we're gonna kick ourselves later once we build up the other areas and once we get the population density going, it's gonna bring in more businesses anyway. Uh, we could have the Trader Joe's and one of those other locations right there in that shopping center that's empty right now. They would, they would wanna come here because we have that population from those locations. So I just don't know if we need the additional people in that area, the, you know, the, the 440 that would maybe be living there, the additional 500 or so cars that might be trying to go to the Fry's gas station, um, and, and just the traffic, the additional traffic is maybe not needed, but that commercial land to me is more needed, and it just fits better in that area. Another thing I have not seen as far as any plans is how those six restaurants, how's anybody that don't live there gonna be able to go to those six restaurants? Because to me, the residents would be parking around it, I think it'd be difficult to get in and out of there if you wanted to try to go to those restaurants. And it just doesn't fit with that area. I've seen places where it fits, like Las Vegas Town Center, where they have the apartments on top of the stores and the parking's on exterior, and you could drive around, and you have like a nice, you know, lawn in the middle, people hang out. That kind of fits, and to me, something like that's better planned as a whole, instead of trying to shoehorn it into an area as a hybrid, that just doesn't fit with the rest of it. So, uh, but anyway, I've just, I would suggest that to think hard about it before voting for it, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for coming for us. Any other speakers?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read resolution number 2020, 2021 dash 2176 by title only, please?
Adopt resolution number 2021 dash 2176 declaring as public records, so certain documents filed with the city clerk titled official supplementary zoning map number 21 dash 03 and Lot 4 legal description in Canyon Trails Town Center residences development regulations MF24 with pad overlay, July 2021.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution 2021 dash 2176, do I hear that motion?
So move.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Laura Tannell. Uh, open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
Since I went almost last on, on the last one, I'll go early on this one. Somebody, so I'm gonna just kind of give this generic look around the room. Somebody has a map of what the 303 looks like in that area, can we have that now, please? And I think it's in Mr. Bull's presentation. Does that, does that sound correct, Mr. Bull?
Mayor Councilman, we do have an exhibit that's right after the conclusion in our PowerPoint slide that shows like a cross-section.
There you go.
Through the 303. If you want the reader's digest on some of those dimensions, they're substantial. The profile of that freeway is from the center line to the nearest building is about 200, uh, be about 245-ish feet. Perhaps importantly, from the outside, north, from the eastern northbound lane to the nearest building is about 175 feet. But what we're talking about is what will ultimately, as I understand it, be three lanes north, three lanes south, elevated roughly 25-ish feet in the air.
Sorry, that, on that slide, the word that says property line, that's about the area that a sound wall will be erected, I believe?
We have a stipulation that requires us to, of course, submit a noise study in conjunction with the site plan review package, which has gone in, the sound study hasn't gone in, but what, uh, through discussions with staff, we did, was reoriented buildings, so we do not have any balconies on the west elevations of the buildings that are closest to the 303 corridor. Um, and our acoustical consultant has studied balconies that would be on the north and or south sides of those buildings where the end caps are proximate to the west property line. And those patios are inset into the building. So it will go through review by city staff, but this is one where at least the acoustic study supports not needing a big sound wall along the freeway. If we had one, it would be along there.
And, and as soon as you said that, I was reminded of the previous conversation that we had, and the reason for that was that the height of the actual roadway is about the height of the rooftop of that building, plus or minus, but it's in that area.
Yeah, it's a significantly elevated freeway. These are, some of our buildings along that western edge are three-story, we also purpose, put their end caps on the three-story buildings. We purposely placed two-story buildings that are garages on the ground floor with residents above them prox, also proximate to that west property line, again, as a part of a proactive noise mitigation design technique.
So the, the reason that I started with this and for the folks that, that spoke tonight, um, when this first, uh, came before us, emotionally, I was, no way this is gonna, why are we replacing a piece of, of retail with, with this? And then, uh, and then I did, uh, an extensive amount of research on the existing properties that um, the applicant has already, has already done and, and looked at those communities and those particular projects. Um, because I just couldn't, I just couldn't see it being, being viable, I just couldn't get my head around that. And, um, as it turns out, they are quite viable and really a good solution for what we have. It is a situation that we're trying to quasi replicate in what was formerly the mall property, is this mixed-use concept and getting this, uh, getting the residents near the, near the retail, near the, um, other amenities that are there, bringing them in together. And I think Councilmember Kano in the last item talked about, uh, the synergy of, of all that being together. Um, so initially, I was, I was with 100%, and I would have, if, if I had to vote that moment when I saw it, I would have said no. But now that I had, uh, had done the research, we had, uh, we've had a meeting, uh, prior to this to try to get some more information uh, with the height of the freeway, where this lays, and my constant, and, and I say that word with a lot of pain, but my constant study of what is happening with retail and with multifamily residential in this valley and this area, um, I am supporting this project to, to see it be successful, not only for the Canyon Trails Town Center, but um, for those residents that are there. Um, it is a, uh, it's a very, it'll be a very unique property for us in the city. We'll have nothing like it, and I don't think we're configured in any other way to do it anywhere else either. Uh, this 303 freeway that it's gonna run through here, um, I think is, uh, 20 years ago, and we, we, we knew it was coming. I think we all thought it was gonna be one thing, but now we're seeing the reality of it, and in seven short years or six short years, it's gonna be here, and it's not gonna look anything like I think we originally thought that it was going to.
Thank you for your comments. Sherry?
I do appreciate the fact that this center, I go to that, that is also my favorite Target. Um, and when you go to it a lot, you don't realize how many holes are there. And I think that's one thing, when, same thing like Councilmember Stip said, when it was first brought, it's like, well, why are we getting rid of retail? And then, though, I made a couple trips there just to look, because when we go to the sushi place, you can't really walk from the sushi place to the Target, it's all dirt. There's so much open space, and I think missing teeth is a really good way to explain it. It's, there's, there's holes there in the center. And we're going on decade number two of very, very little going there. Um, it's a Filiberto's, a KFC and a, um, Car Wash have, what have come. And that's not gonna fill out those big holes, there is so much space in that center, I would like to see some synergy. The sushi place is packed, Garden Pizza is packed. But it doesn't bring it to the whole center, because it, it needs to, it needs to fill in. And I think the multi-use concept is a good way to fill in those holes and to bring other uses there. And I, I, I don't exactly what those uses are, I think that's left to the experts, but I think we have all, from 2007 when this started, um, the retailer from the early 2000s is not the retailer that we deal with now. Um, especially now after the pandemic, everything's taken another seismic shift. Um, and what we're talking about is we put restaurants in, well, we need to make sure there's ways for people to use their car more, or to, or to stay close, um, to get takeout. Um, so I think there's a lot of shifts that have happened since this, in the, you know, early to mid 2000s that this was first planned. Um, just the big boxes just isn't where it's at anymore, so I would like to see, um, this center get some life, get some synergy. I love the row shops that you enter, but they look kind of like a little island out there, then you've got a Target, and then you have a hole, and you have dirt. You know, it, I would like to see it fill in, so if you wanted to go to the, the sushi place and then draw, walk over to something else and have that walking path and not through dirt and just parking lots. Um, I think it's more comfortable and it's more pedestrian-friendly. And I think the vision for this is gonna kind of wake up that area, and I think the synergy will be very good, so I do support this project. I understand the concerns. Um, but in the big scheme of things, I would prefer, I mean, I know Home Depot's not coming, but Home Depot bringing the pallets and the trucks and having the, the, you know, the rental trucks parked out there. I, I really think that the, um, multifamily is probably a, a higher, better use for this little corner here, so I, I do support it.
Next, Brandon?
Yeah, I, I think originally I was definitely against this, because I wanted to make sure we preserve some of our commercial for the future. Um, but I think it, I live in Canyon Trails, so I'd be pretty, in fact, I go to this center all the time, so, um, I, I, I understand, listening and reading, uh, that, that the center would, wouldn't be able to have that in that particular location, but I'm hoping that there'll be hotel and some other uses, and if there is something bigger. And if there is something bigger, that there'll still be room for that, like a Whole Foods, or a Natural Grocers, or, or something. I hope that's still viable in that area there. So, and I'm hoping the six restaurants are, are good things. Because, because the, because I know the garden and the sushi place, I go to the sushi place all the time. So they're, they're very, very popular. And that four, four shopping areas is very, very popular as well. So I'd love to see this development continue. Because obviously, we keep bringing more and more residents to this West Goodyear. And this is really the only shopping center that they have right now. Yeah, I'd love to see some, I mean, if there is something equivalent to a Home Depot, but another Ace Hardware over there, or something. But, but yeah, so I would, yeah, as long as we can still, the center can still grow and still have the high-quality things that we like there, entertainment, shopping, boxes, and other things for that, to service that entire part of the West, West Goodyear, then I think I'm, I'm okay with it. And then the, how the people are gonna get out for, just to address, I think it was Ron's or Linda's comments about the traffic, that I'm pretty sure right along that, because like I said, drive right through there. I think along that is an exit to the 303, or at least the service road, right? To take a right turn onto the service road, hook up to the I-10. And then the left turn to the light, if you wanted to get to the lilac, which will be another, another frontage road eventually, when it goes over, over lilac there. Trying to think of anything else. Do we know that that, I'm sure you already done the traffic on it, with the two, this one and the other? I mean, will that lilac be able to hold the traffic that we foresee in that getting on and off, or getting on to the service road there? Or do we, I'm just curious how that was gonna look there?
At site plan, that will be when we go into the in-depth, look at Aviata, all the other projects in the area, and then they'll determine if there's any other mitigating factors that'll be needed.
Yeah, and just like the last one, I mean, it's gonna be an issue, traffic, until we get the 303 complete on there. So I'm just trying to think any mitigating type things. Because even the Odyssey School, when people are coming in and out of that school, they use lilacs as the, the main in, in and out entrance. So it backs up almost to the 303, parents going to the school, which is deep into the neighborhood. So, so just to, just trying to feel what that's gonna look like, because I'm the one that's gonna be feeling that, because my kids go to Odyssey there too. And I live in that neighborhood. So, so, okay, I was just curious what that would feel like, what that would look like, and is there any mitigation we can, we can do in the future for that? And then, yeah, they'll be really close to that new fire station, will be going over there as well. And then, other than that, then yeah. I think overall for that plaza, I would like more walking paths in that plaza eventually, too. That'd be nice as well. Just throw my two cents out there, my, my hopes and dreams. All right, thank you.
Councilman Cano?
I'd like to thank Christian and the applicant for a thorough presentation, because a lot of my questions were answered. Specifically, why is it too big? And what's the future of the commercial in Canyon Trails? And I'm happy to hear there's still a substantial amount. Because I, I believe that with the tremendous growth in West Goodyear, this is just gonna be a, a very vibrant, a very vibrant part of our city. I also want to know if the current retailers knew what was going on and, and heard that as well. And I think that everything we've ever thought about shopping centers has all been turned upside down now. Just the world has changed substantially. And I think that we all have that commitment, as much as we want to keep all the commercial, we want Canyon Trails to be a vibrant, alive, thriving, growing shopping center. I think if you've heard, sat through the previous item, people want restaurants. And I think if you can start bringing in restaurants, I think people will sing your praises. But the, the mixed-use concept, I think we're starting to see more and more in Goodyear. I think we're gonna see around Civic Square, probably around Harkins. I think it's a good, healthy, vibrant, integrated way to make areas be alive and, and also to facilitate bringing those amenities that we really want. So although I was originally very hesitant about it, I think you've come up with a nice product. I think, I appreciate that it's not a huge footprint, but hopefully enough to accomplish what you expect it to do. And I will also be in support of this.
Councilman Campbell?
Thank you. To the resident that mentioned Costco, we would love nothing more than to have Costco. But we've been talking to Costco for years, and they are not interested in coming to Goodyear. And of course, we want Trader Joe's. We've been trying to court Trader Joe's for years. And our economic development department is working daily on, on some of these well-known merchants that we're trying to, to get. But obviously, if they were gonna come to Goodyear, they didn't go and look at Canyon Trails. So we know that Canyon Trails does look tired, and it needs a kickstart, and I think this is a wonderful way to do it. Goodyear's just a little bit slower at having these projects compared to, if you go out Happy Valley Road, you go out Lake Pleasant, all in Peoria, you'll see this mixed-use development with their shopping centers all over. And they are very attractive, and it's, and it's, there's so much synergy, so many people are out all the time, and I just think it's a win-win. We just, we just realized, not, not recently, but we don't have a big regional mall coming to Goodyear anymore, ever. And because of that, we need to do whatever we can to keep what malls we do have up and vibrant, and whatever it takes. And if, if by chance, this housing doesn't work, it can always be done for something else eventually. But I just think the Emery name alone means that we're going to have a outstanding product and one that is going to be showcased in the West Valley. So thank you.
Councilwoman Bazillo?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on Councilmember Cano. If, if you, if you can produce some quality sit-down restaurants at that location, once this product goes in, they'll all be singing your praises. Because that's the one thing we hear all the time. Even the quality, and everybody kind of underestimates. And I, somehow, we gotta figure out a way to get the word out there. Because we've got restaurants in Goodyear that are number one in the state. You try to get to them on the weekends, you can't get in them. So if you've got a quality product, you're gonna do very well here, you know? But we need to convince corporate or whatever, and I'm hoping that this product will be enough to try to convince them to add it there in that plaza. But yeah, we, we need to get some quality sit-down restaurants. Had enough of drive-throughs, it would be nice to get a nice quality restaurant in there. So anything you can do to try to wrestle that up, to add, you know, to spruce up this, this area, would really be appreciated.
Counsel's finished? Well, David, I, I loved the Vestar, you had it in there. And I thought you were on the right track. And it, you've left a legacy, because I think if you look at Target and you look at some of the buildings that are in there, they're still beautiful. They're still advanced. So I know you've got the energy, and you've got the thought behind it. The other thing is, I think that that could be kind of more like a village area. It just, I get that feel when I go through the, the community and the color of the houses and the sizes of the houses. And I just think that that could be something that felt like that, you know? It, it won't be Litchfield Park, but it'll be our own. And so I would like a more homey-type atmosphere, so that they feel like they've actually gone into a different city. Not that I want them, but not away from our city, but that feel, I think would do very well in there. So I appreciate you coming back. I think we're all excited about this. All right, counsel, all discussions done? All right, let's vote on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. All right, will the city clerk please read ordinance number 2021-1516 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2021-1516, conditionally rezoning approximately 12.7 acres of property located at the southeast corner of Cotton Lane and Canyon Trails Boulevard to be known as Canyon Trails Town Center residences. Amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion of second to approve ordinance 2021-1516? Did I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton, no, I'm sorry, Councilman, don't tell me, Cano? And I believe it was Councilwoman Bazillo did the second. Is that correct? Oh, I'm a winner, right? Okay, counsel, any more discussion? All right, let's vote on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the ayes have it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. The last public hearing items to consider, the Lakin Park Bungalows PAD overlay. I'm open to the public hearing. Oh, we have Alex, Alex Lutensky, Senior Planner, back with us.
Good evening, mayor and council. Alex Lutensky, Senior Planner, I know you just said that, a little sleepy. This rezone I have before you tonight is the Lakin Park Bungalows PAD rezone. The subject property is south of MC85, west of Cotton Lane, west of the Lakin Industrial Project, that's currently under development. It's approximately 20 acres in its entirety. Just a little bit of this history, this big yellow area, the council approved the CP Lakin Park PAD back in 2019. Most of it was zoned for industrial uses, a mix of commercial, flex commercial within the center along Cotton Lane. And then this piece was reserved for a multifamily project. So a big portion of the property is already zoned multifamily under that CP Lakin Park PAD. The property owner did not own this remaining piece. And as we discussed approximately a month ago, a portion of that property was not annexed into the city. So the property owner for the Lakin Park site was going to acquire this piece, annex the remaining portion, and then the rezone, to rezone the entire piece tonight to that multifamily. So as I mentioned, the request is to rezone the property to an MF24 district with a PAD overlay. It is consistent with what was approved in the multifamily district in that CP Lakin Park PAD back in 2019. We did clean up that PAD overlay, and we didn't want to change anything that was in the industrial portion, because it is under construction. So we just made it a new PAD overlay. So no changes, just a cleanup. We had had some multifamily district zoning text amendments and design guidelines since that rezoning. So we, we were able to take some things out, because the city code already applied those standards. The PAD overlay does two things. One, it allows the single-family rentals. And then, two, it reduces the rear yard setback from 30 feet to 20 feet. This is consistent with a lot of the multi, the MF12, single-story multifamily rentals that we've seen. So we wanted to build that into the PAD overlay. But otherwise, the zoning district remains consistent with the MF24 district. This is a conceptual site plan that the applicant has provided. There's two points of access. The main access point, you can see up here, leads into the clubhouse, which I have a conceptual picture of on my last slide. And then I do have some elevations, some colored elevations that the applicant has provided. This staff and the applicant have heard, council does want to be able to provide some feedback. So they have open ears, staff has open ears tonight while I show you these next conceptual elevations. And with this product, the applicant is proposing five building types. So I'm just gonna scroll through the pictures. Sorry, these weren't included in the packet. The applicant was working on these up until last week. So we didn't have the final renderings until tonight. So this is a one-story, one-bedroom unit. On the left, there's a little bit of a bluish color. On the right, some of the Spanish style that you've seen in typical single-family communities. This product, the applicant is proposing a two-story product within the mix. This is something we haven't seen before in any of the single-family rentals. So it is a unique addition. With the MF24 district, it does cap the, the building height as at a higher height. So they can build this within that zoning district. This is a one-story, two-bedroom unit, a one-story, three-bedroom unit, and then a two-story, three-bedroom unit. I appreciate Councilmember Stip reaching out. I copied and pasted the wrong fire station information. So for the record, this is the correct fire station information. Station 184 and 182 are the nearest and second-nearest fire stations to this property. We did have an alternative citizen review process for this project, since there are no residents within the 500-foot boundary, and no feedback was received. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and did not receive any feedback. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval on that September 15th hearing. Staff does find it meets the general plan zoning ordinance and engineering standards. And commission and staff recommend approval. As I mentioned earlier, I have, this is the clubhouse elevation proposed at that main entry. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant has a presentation, but can also utilize my slides if needed. He can answer any questions, and I can answer any as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would, would the applicant like to speak? No, okay. Well, then we're gonna have you there for questions. I'm sure there'll be some, so I'm gonna close this public hearing.
Mayor, mayor, I do have a couple speaker cards.
I'm sorry, what am I off now? Oh, you have some speaker cards?
I do have some speaker cards.
All right, I'm sorry, I should have asked.
So Noel Carter?
Mr. Carter, I apologize for that.
Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate your time. My name is Noel Carter, General Manager of Buckeye Water Conservation and Drainage District. We'd like to talk a little bit about this PAD as it affects our canal system directly. It is immediately adjacent to our main canal system. That is right on the south side of the proposed pad, or PAD. Some of our issues that we have is, we actually have a lateral that goes right through the middle of that, through, or through the west third part of that PAD. These are some of the things that I've been coming into, issues that I've been having lately, is because proposed PADs have been approved, and we don't know anything about them from the developer side. The, one of the slides that Alex showed there showed the, that proposed plan right there. Well, that puts several homes, 20, maybe 30, right over the top of our open lateral current, that is open currently. And if you, mayor, if you would, would like, I have some, some photos here that show, the red line is actually our lateral that goes through there. And I apologize, I probably don't have enough copies for everybody. But that lateral has been there since the district, since the canal system was established. It is, it's one of our primary feeds off of our three main wellsite, which is north of, north and west of MC85. So that red line goes right down through the west third of that proposed property, or PAD there. The other issues that arrive from having development like this right along, adjacent to our canal is, we can't keep people off of our canal system already. People trespass, they vandalize, it is a continual battle. My employees feel at risk. We tried to get, Mayor Culpeper County Sheriff's Department, Goodyear PD out there, but trespassing and fishing on our canal isn't necessarily a priority, because there's other crimes being committed, and lots, lots, many times where we have to wait. I myself have waited for two hours when people were down shooting on some of our property while I had employees working. And that was a dispatch issue, because it was, no, it's Avondale, no, it's Goodyear. They kept putting me back and forth. So response time and keeping people from trespassing, vandalizing, and fishing on our canal system has been a tremendous feat for us. To the point where I've actually recommended to my board that we employ our own law enforcement agency, which I really don't want to do. One, it's, it's a lot more for me. And then, two, it, it's gonna cause a big assessment on taxes for the folks in, in my district. We don't want to do that. So putting something like that right along our canal system is, is not just dangerous for my employees, but it's a public safety issue also. We've had people drown in our canal, that water moves much faster than people think. And we would encourage the council to keep that industrial or, or change it to industrial for that very And we would encourage the council to keep that industrial or, or change it to industrial for that very reason.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any of your cards?
Yes, mayor, Linda Esposito. She must have left. Yeah. She's for this one, too. She left, mayor. She was opposed to the, to the item.
Any other?
No, mayor.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one seventy-eight by title only, please?
Adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one seventy-eight declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled official supplementary zoning map, twenty-one dash zero four, Lakin Park Bungalows legal description, and Lakin Park Bungalows PAD overlay book, August twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second? Approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one seventy-eight. Do I hear that motion?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilwoman Stiff, and a second by Councilwoman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Hampton?
Can staff address that lateral issue about, I assume he's concerned because he might have to dig it up in the future? Is that true?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Hampton, um, the gentleman is correct. Steve with, Steve Cento with Engineering is also gonna address this topic as well. But this is really an issue between the irrigation district and the property owner. And, uh, engineering has been in discussions with them, and they have been given notice. So, I'm gonna turn that over to Steve to explain a little bit.
Thanks, Mayor and council. A little way down the road, should this move forward when we get to the design process and the civil construction drawings? Under normal course of design, the engineer that would work with this property owner and BWCCD would design a relocation or tiling of the lateral that would go through the permitting process of the city and BWCCD, just, uh, as similar with Roosevelt Irrigation District and MWD that you maybe have heard of more recently on some of the other projects.
So, they're gonna tile it? They're gonna act, they're gonna create access for it?
So, they will have to, so, this happens in many different instances. It happened not too long ago on Bullard, as a matter of fact, with the Prologis project. They had a lateral running through, and it had to be relocated. This is nothing unusual. We work with the irrigation districts, and the applicant has to work with the irrigation districts and with us in order to secure that this continues to, to flow water, if that answers your question.
So, the, the owner and the water district, the owner will give, will make sure there's access to this, to this?
Yes, it's not being cut off. It has to be relocated, as Steve pointed out.
Oh, not the relocate, so they're, so the solution is you'll, you'll have to move it, is what you're saying? Or give them access to that line?
Correct. In many instances, the irrigation district has prior rights, and the developer will work with them to relocate or maintain their prior rights.
Okay.
Whether it be access, uh, the utility pipe.
Okay.
This is almost a, very, very similar to the, um, situation that Microsoft faced with, um, MWD up north off of Camelback. I'm, I'm sorry, Indian School.
Okay.
So, they had irrigation lateral there, they had to work with the irrigation district to relocate it. It's got the approval, worked through the engineering department in order to secure city approvals, and now it's being reconstructed. Same, it'll be the same process.
Okay, so there is a solution. And then, can you remind me, I'm confused on which irrigation's which. Is the, is this, is this the same irrigation district or different one, or similar to the one that goes through Palm Valley? The, the canal that goes? Is it smaller in my, my mind's eye? That one's a lot significantly smaller than this one, but I'm just curious.
I believe that's Maricopa Water District.
Or RID, one of the two. Yeah, it's not, it's not the Buckeye one. Right.
Okay. Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious, I'm just trying to relate it, if it all was the same kind of relation to residents who use that and walk that and, and if they're the same kind of nuisance that would be here? Or, I'm just curious what that would look like with, I know there's other places in Goodyear that have, are New York canals, and I'm just trying to associate that with what this might be like or feel like in the future, potentially. So, um, and then, the other question is, I see the last, the very, the very last slide had, like, how it fits into the whole picture of the freeways? Is there any sound, sound barriers? Or is it too far away to where it makes sense to have a sound barrier? Or, 'cause it's gonna be almost, I mean, on three sides almost by freeways, so.
Vice Mayor, I don't have the specific dimensions, but I don't believe it is, it falls within the boundary that requires the, the sound mitigation in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious how, I saw this, how it fit in the whole entire area there. And it is, it's not gonna be quiet and rural in the future here. It's gonna be a bustling freeway system, so. Okay, um, I think that's all the questions I had. Yeah, as long as they're able to figure out the canal and access and, and all that between each other, then I think I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Councilman Kano?
Just for clarification, whose responsibility is it to notify the irrigation district?
The staff did notify the irrigation district of the rezoning request.
Okay, so the property owner notifies them as well as the city?
The property owner, as Steve mentioned, works directly with the irrigation district on the permitting process.
There is additional multifamily on that PAD, is that correct? It's not just that corner?
This is the only piece within the Lakin Park.
Okay, so the rest will be industrial?
The rest is industrial, except for that central corridor. There's a little bit of flex commercial industrial.
Okay. And what is the, the plan to create a barrier, uh, from, from the canal? In terms of fencing or?
The applicant, um, has included, uh, there is a perimeter wall on the, on the, along the boundary of the property with no access to the canal.
Thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
If we approve this tonight, the applicant still has to work with the, with Buckeye before he can bill, correct?
That's correct.
Does it come back before us again?
Not before the council.
All right. And I know you said this is not unusual, but it's the first time I've really heard that we're presenting something, and it's on someone's canal, and they're, they don't want it there, and I can understand why. This is really unusual.
I agree.
So, how, how long does, do they have to work it out with Buckeye? However long it takes?
That's correct. There's, there's no time limit on them to get it done, completed.
Okay, and I do also want to comment, the pictures of the houses, personally, I don't like them. I think they look very plain and very different, and very stark, and they're not very inviting, and I don't really like them. And, um, I mean, the concept probably is kind of nice, but they're just so plain and, and ugly. And just because they're being proposed this far down south, we still want them to look nice with accents or whatever. So, I hope that, will we see them again? I know this is conceptual.
Uh, no, councilmember.
Won't?
No, with this zoning action, it would go to the staff to view, review for compliance with the design guidelines. And based off your comments today, we would take those into account, account as well.
Look awful. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Pizzillo?
I don't know, to me, it, and again, I'm no engineer, but it seems like you would resolve this first before you would bring this to us. But, and again, not being an engineer, that's how I kind of logically see it. May have had it before, but I would hope something like this would have been resolved before we see it. That's my two cents worth.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So, we, as Alex alluded to, we give notice to all interested parties. The irrigation district is a, is an interested party. They got noticed. They've been in communication, as Steve indicated. Tonight, what we're doing is just rezoning the property. We're not authorizing permits tomorrow. They still have to go through a design process. With the irrigation district approve, review and approval, and with engineering department review and approval. So, this is just one step. And I believe that the gentleman from the irrigation district wanted to come express his concerns on the change of land use, just like other residents would. But we are not, um, there is not a design done yet. It still has to go, be engineered after, should council approve this land use zoning change tonight, if that makes sense.
Councilmember Loretano?
I, I have the two concerns, exactly what Councilman Pizzillo. It's like, seems like we're going a little quickly. I, I would like to have this resolved, or at least have a little more information before I could support this with regard to that, the two issues brought up. Because those are kind of unique issues, and that canal there, again, it, it's odd that someone doesn't want it there and that they're coming to us when we're so far in the process. So, I wish that would have been resolved before. So, I don't think I can support it at this current form right now. The other issue is, what did you call the houses, ugly or terrible?
No, I just said, I don't like them.
Okay, I, I think they're terrible.
I think they're ugly.
I, I agree. We have a four-sided architecture, and, uh, could you put those up in there again?
They kind of look like stove pipes.
They are, they look like sheds.
They do.
I, and I know it's just conceptual, it's gonna go to staff, but the fact it was brought to us looking like this, I mean, after, I don't know how many times we've said four-sided architecture, we want pop-outs, we want some sort of, you know, stonework or something. I mean, that looks like, uh, I, that's, that's horrible. I mean, I'm not gonna support this. I, I know we say it can go to staff, but I have no guarantee. And if this is what the original concept, this is the, the best that we're gonna impress people with is gonna be at this point, I'm just not gonna support this at this point. If they want to come back later and fix some of these issues, I'd be happy to take another look at it. But right now, I just can't support it, sorry.
Councilmember Stiff?
I can't wait to hear you, with your expression. Let it out.
No, 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 I've been good all night, I'm just. The irrigation pipeline fix, that whole thing, is that guided by our? We have written, is that written stuff that we have to follow? I don't want to call it an ordinance, but we're, we're not just doing it by, by the whim.
Yes, sir, that's correct. That is not being done by the whim. They have, the irrigation district, and Steve can, can piggyback here, has an interest in the property. They have an existing improvement on there, and it cannot be just cut off. It has to be relocated, or redesigned, or worked around. And that is something that the irrigation district would be part of.
Similar to a building code?
Yes, sir.
Or, so, I, I think we're getting wrapped up around the, around the axle, if I can just stick with that metaphor. But we're getting wrapped up around it on this one particular issue about the, um, the cut-through line that goes through there. We do this all the time. And whether it's this irrigation district, it's RID, or it's the Maricopa Water District, we do this. We don't even know about it as a council. So, I really caution the rest of, the rest of, you know, caution us as a collective group, let's not get wrapped up on that. And we never, we don't get to say, other than tonight, to go, like it, don't like it. We don't get a say in how these buildings look. We have theoretically trusted it to staff, and it's up to us to take it away from them if they screw it up. So, I, I, I don't want to not, we've come this far. I don't want to not approve something tonight because we don't like how these conceptual drawings look. I'm tired, obviously, 'cause I'm, now I'm laughing my way through this, but, um, I, uh, and, uh, is it Noel? I didn't catch your last name, or I would address you by that properly. So, I apologize for being informal. But first of all, thank you for being here, 'cause you have been here from the very beginning of tonight. I saw you walk in. So, my hat's off to you for sticking it out this long. The, the other issue is, we have built a number of resident, single-family residents, multifamily, commercial, along all the other canals, the active canals that we have. I, the one good news of this is, you will have zero question in your mind who the police agency is to address your trespass issues because it'll clearly be us. But, uh, we've, as we did with these other two projects tonight, these things are moving forward. We are under, they're moving dirt for the industrial pieces of this. So, we can't pretend that there's nothing going on out there. And this is just an opportunity to provide some workforce housing to folk, to the folks that are gonna, that are gonna work out there. I don't think we should let that go by. Okay, off the soapbox. The only technical, um, question or comment that I have regarding this site is both, I'm gonna say the Lakin Development in its entirety, both the multifamily and the industrial, is way outside of our normal response time. If you look at where that is on the map, if you go back to that, I'm sorry.
It's one eighty-four.
No, not to the, uh, go back to the map piece.
Got it.
If you look at where that is, we all know where one eighty-four is. And it's, it's plus nine minutes from there. And we're not only putting multifamily there, but we're also putting a very large industrial park. And if you look across the street, we all know that's the southern end of Las Briesas and the other industrial. So, when we have this conversation like we did last week about where's the next fire station gonna go, I think we're looking at one of the locations. So, I'm gonna call these out only because we got so far away from the discussion about where these fire stations are in relationship to the things that we're approving, that we have this whole west Goodyear that, I'm a broken record. Ten years ago, I said, these are way outside, and it was like, oh, don't worry, we'll cover it, it's no big deal. Well, here we are today with nine-minute response times. I want us, as long as I'm sitting here, I'm gonna continue to remind us that we have a responsibility to provide a reasonable response time, and nine minutes is just way outside of that. So, please keep that in mind as we start talking about future CIP projects. This is a good project, it's good where it's at. Yeah, I think we can make some improvements, and hopefully staff and the, and the project will look at, creating some aesthetically pleasing places for people to live that don't make it feel like, we got an email tonight that it looks like tiny homes or whatever. Let's just make it work.
Comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, the applicant was wondering if he can speak.
Yeah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kyle Barcello, RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture, Tempe, Arizona, on behalf of Cavan Companies. And I was, um, I know it's been a long night, so I sincerely appreciate you hearing me out during this time. And I think one thing that I really just want to highlight is, um, right now, we're really focusing on kind of the land use issue. The, the current status of the Lakin Park permitted about fifteen-point-four acres of this multifamily. So, should this addition of four-point-eight acres not be added, hypothetically, the developer could then go in and develop, uh, under the current standards without any issues for this specific type of use. However, going back through the process, we haven't quite reached site plan, so some of these engineering items are starting to come up. And we're well aware of the Buckeye irrigation, um, issues, not even really issues. These are just challenges that we're gonna have to be planning around. We're gonna be working side-by-side with them. There's no way that this is gonna go unnoticed or unaddressed. And Noel Carter, him being here tonight, just, just proves that it's on us to do our due diligence properly and work with them through this site planning application process. But again, we are just talking right now at the PAD level, so this is just establishing that extra piece that you see there. It's four-point-eight acres to be added on to the existing entitlement. So, tonight, uh, the, what, what I really just kind of want to reiterate is, is that component of this being added to the existing approved multifamily. And as it relates to the elevations, we hear you loud and clear. I understand that. And as it relates to the elevations, we hear you loud and clear, I understand, that elevations aren't typically provided to the council at this time. That's not something that you typically see or have seen historically. And I understand that with the new approval of the MF12 district, we are well aware of the high standards that Goodyear is setting for these type of developments, and we're more than happy to work with staff, taking your comments, and, and really developing something that we can be proud of. It's not in our best interest to, to build a product that doesn't look nice. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but, but I, and, and one last thing that I will add, if it does add any assurance, we're happy to agree to some stipulation as it relates to the Buckeye Irrigation District, or anything in the council that might feel appropriate to kind of get this thing, get this thing across the finish line. So thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Well, I have some, I certainly want the gentleman, is it Noel, was it? Okay, we kind of just forgot him here. Whatever we do, however this goes, let's, let's bring him in, so let's let him know what's going on. I mean, I can't, after I see this kind of discussion, I'm sorry, I think that's wrong. So I don't know what the rules are, I don't know what laws are, but the laws of just being communicative and helping someone through this, that's a, that's a meaningful thing to me, and I don't think he has. And, and he's got problems, may not be able to solve them, but, but let's work towards all three entities, you know, Buckeye, and, and the developer, and the farmer. So, and let me tell you, those are, I was in the home business, and I'm telling you, those are awful. And to, to bring them up, and we, you don't have to design, you don't have to, we don't have to know at this point, but do you know what that's done for you? Oh, my goodness, because you've got seven people looking at this saying, oh, they're ugly. And I don't usually use the word ugly. I've been in the business, those are ugly. So we need to have something that's more compatible out there. I can see them being more industrial-looking, because it's in an industrial place. You could probably do something very clever with that, but I definitely, and I want to give you a heads up on this, be terrible at the last minute when you legally have to show us something, that would, I wouldn't want to do that to you. And I want you to introduce yourself to that farmer tonight, okay? And I want you guys to know each other, and I want to see that you're communicating, okay? And if you do that, I'll, I'll vote for this tonight, okay? Is that the understanding? You're both nodding your head, so, sounds good. Yes.
One thing.
Now let's staff talk.
Thank you, Mayor. If you remember, we had the joint work session with, with the planning commission a couple weeks ago, and during that, we had a lively discussion about architecture, and colors, and vibrancy, and things of that nature. So us bringing you these elevations, which were provided, helps us get to a better place, so.
You scared us a little bit tonight, that's okay.
But it helps us all get to a better place. So we appreciate the input, and I think the developer has heard council's desires loud and clear, so thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, let's vote on, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Will the city clerk please read an ordinance number 2021-1517 by title only?
Mayor, could I just clarify that the nays on that were Councilmember Laura Tano and also Councilmember Campbell?
Yeah, that was a no vote.
Okay, thank you. For the ordinance, adopt ordinance number 2021-1517, rezoning approximately 20 acres of land located south of MC85, west of South Cotton Lane from planned area development pad and agricultural urban AU to a multifamily residential use, with the planned area development pad overlay, amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, corrections, and severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve ordinance 2021-1517? Do you hear that motion?
Still moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Pizzillo, and a second from, which one? The second, or, yeah, okay, Councilman Pizzillo did the motion, Stip did the second.
I didn't want to give you my Nixon, but yeah.
Oh, that's okay. I'll take anything tonight. Open for council discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we're going to go to the regular business agenda. I think this is the latest time we've ever been, isn't it?
Let's add a couple more, just.
Yeah, I remember these, yesteryear we did this, but not, not in this timeframe. I'd like to remind council to wait for the motion a second before discussion. The first item on business is consider approving the ratification of the Third Amendment to the City of Phoenix Intergovernmental Agreement for Shared Telecommunication Facility. Chief Rodriguez is presenting. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try to make this quick, I know it's been a long night. So I'm here requesting to ratify the execution of the Third Amendment to the City of Phoenix IGA for shared telecommunications facilities, and to extend the agreement for another 10 years through May of 2023. You may ask, why am I doing this in business? So to give a little bit of history on why we're here, back in May of 2020, the Third Amendment document was signed and executed by both parties extending the IGA. However, there was, however, there's required council approval, but there was an administrative error on our part. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you have, but once again, we're seeking to ratify the Third Amendment to the IGA, which will authorize the extension of the agreement through May of 2030, and also allow for another 10-year option to renew through May of 2040.
All right, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2021-2180 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2021-2180, approving the Third Amendment of the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Phoenix for Continued Shared Telecommunication Facilities, and Providing for Authorization and Ratification.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to adopt Resolution 2021-2180? Do I hear that motion?
Some, second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell, and a second by Councilman Kano. Open for council discussion? No discussion? Let's vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. We're on the next item, 15, to consider approving the COVID-19 leave for the COVID-positive cases. Lyman Lockett is from Human Resources. Lyman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm bringing forward a request for your approval to reinstate COVID-related leave for employees who are COVID-positive, or those that have a reaction to the COVID vaccine. Little bit of background, over the last 16 months, we have successfully managed the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic without impacting city services. We have employed many different mitigation strategies to stop the spread of COVID amongst our employees, and providing COVID leave to isolate positive cases has proven to be one of our most effective mitigation strategies. In order to accommodate this, the availability of paid leave is a key component of managing and encouraging employees to stay home when they're ill. Looking back over this time, from April 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021, COVID leave was federally mandated through the Coronavirus Response Act, and that leave expired. When it expired, we came to council and asked for an extension due to a spike at that time, and council granted us the approval for that leave. That leave expired May 31st, 2021, and unfortunately, since the expiration of that leave, we've experienced another spike, and we're coming back to ask for approval of paid leave for employees who test positive, and again, for those who have a reaction to the vaccine. In order to access this leave, employees would need to present documentation confirming a positive COVID case, or that they have been vaccinated. We would have this leave retroactive back to 6/1 when we, when the other leave expired. And our expectation is that we would have approximately 10 to 12 employees that would access this leave per month. We do not anticipate any fiscal impact, and we would also propose that this leave coincide with Governor Ducey's declaration of emergency. Upon expiration of that declaration of emergency, the leave would expire. With that, I will answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anyone else like to speak? All right, can I have a motion a second to approve the reinstating retroactive leave, paid leave for employees testing positive with the COVID-19? Do I hear that motion?
Still moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman, excuse me, Councilman Pizzillo, and a second from Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion? Councilman Laura Tano?
I, I think this is a good idea to have, because obviously, this kind of keeps mutating, and we keep getting it. I, I guess my question is, how, how do we make sure that we cover the people that have, they're calling it long COVID, or COVID fog, or other health issues that clearly arise from COVID, but we don't know? Will there be enough time in this bank to cover this? If the governor's ends, can we still use it? I mean, I, my concern is, there's going to be some long-term consequences, and I want to make sure everybody is covered long-term.
Thank you for the question. I, our, our plan would be to provide leave to bridge them to short-term disability in those long COVID cases. So we would anticipate, and our, our experience has been that most people are isolating for the 10 days. We have had a couple of long haulers, but we would expect to cover that time period if they so needed it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, this is such an unknown, and I think the effects are still unknown, that I want to make sure that, that we do have that ability later on, okay?
Any other comments? All right, let's vote on.
Mayor, I do.
Councilmember Sip?
I'm trying to figure out a way to say this without, without being politically insulting, but I'd, I'd like us to review this again in, in 90 days, or the first part of January, and not leave this up to the governor's discretion to start or end it. Think we need to get some more information about how much is being used, we'll have a better idea what's going on 90 days from now. I'm okay with going retroactive, but I think we ought to look at this again in January, and not let the governor decide whether we continue it or not. I'd just like a review of it in 90 days, that's all.
Any other discussion on what Bill was asking? Any questions? Are you going to keep track of it?
Yeah, we'll monitor leave usage, so employees, once they submit their documentation, they'll enter a code for the utilization of the leave, and we'll be able to monitor how much is being used.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Make sure I understand it, the review would be to cover, in case the governor drops that, we might decide that we want to pursue it.
Or we may decide we want to end it before he decides to, because the whole thing's political, so let's do it based on what's happening in our city, rather than doing what the governor decides. If the governor decides tomorrow, I'm ending this on the 15th of October, then we, we're done. And we may, and we may say, no, we want to, we want to go a little bit farther, because we don't, you know, this is such a political hot button, that if we, if we as a council, if this comes back to us in 90 days to either continue it or end it, based on whatever has happened, this whole thing could get much worse, this whole thing could get much better, it could become political where he just says, that's it, I'm ending it. I mean, who knows?
Yeah, but I think a lot's going to have to do with the track record of what HR is finding.
That's what I'm saying. So if we come back and revisit this in 90 days, rather than it expires when the governor, when the governor decides that it's over, maybe it's not over then.
Well, I can understand that.
That's what I'm driving at.
That's what the governor says.
So I'm trying not to, to slam the governor, I'm just trying to say, can we review this in 90, in 90 days? That's all I'm asking for.
All right, so if the governor says it's out, we're still going good for 90 days? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I just, I just want to make sure.
Or whichever comes first, however you want to word it. But I don't want this to go on forever, because at some point in time, the, the cure is going to be available, and we're just going to have people who are going to choose to ignore it. So at some point, this has to end. So if the governor chooses to never end it, are we going to keep creating this leave bank forever? I mean, his term is up when? The end of '22? So this could conceivably go on for another year and a half. I, I'm just, I think we ought to have an end to it. We had an end to it to begin with, it was when the, when the mayor decided to end the declaration in the city. That was the, that was the end. Now we're going to leave it up to the governor, who has been all over the place.
No, I'm, I'm not saying leave it up to the governor, what I'm saying is, it's our call of whether we go forward or not go forward.
Right, but right now, it's completely up to the governor whether this continues or not.
Cityman, I hear you have a comment?
I just, if I could clarify, the way that, when we were looking at, asking council to, to bring this policy back to cover our staff, we were looking for, is there, is there a trigger date? And so we had come up with the, the thought process of mirroring it to the governor's declaration of emergency. But certainly, if council's comfort level is for us to just come back in January with our recommendation as to whether or not this continue, that is, that is perfectly acceptable to staff.
Let's hear from the other part of the council. Laura?
I think it's an important leave, and certainly, you know, we're still at a critical time as we're navigating COVID, and, you know, we think, well, maybe we're past it, and then we're not. And so I guess that's, to Councilmember Stip's point, there's so much uncertainty, and, and because of the political implications, perhaps it would be better if we manage it ourselves, and set our own, our own dates and review dates, as opposed to tying it to the governor.
Sherry?
I guess my concern is, I, I very much agree with the fact, I, at other levels of government, this has become a red-blue issue, you know, this whole thing has, which, it's a virus, it's not. And I want to make sure our staff is protected.
Me too.
And that they have that. We have a staff member who works for us, who has the long COVID, she has fog, she's a young lady, and she has vaccinated. So you, you see these long-reaching issues. So I don't have a problem, I think, keeping it in-house, that we monitor and make sure that it doesn't end early, I guess, you know, it may be something that goes on for a while, because this summer, we were all okay, everything was opening up, and then we got the Delta, and then now there's the Mew, or whatever, coming out. So I don't know, but I don't have a problem us deciding ourselves, rather than keeping it tied to a whole nother level of government, that, again, I think you, you did state it right, they have been all over the board, and I think that gives more protection to our staff, because we know what our staff's doing, so there's no hole. I don't want to see them get a hole, the governor says, no, not on this date, and now we've got this uncovered hole where people aren't covered. At least we'll know to keep people covered.
So you're saying to?
I'm okay to review it, us review it, whether it's January, February, whenever, you know.
No vote on it tonight, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
All right, comments? All right, it looks like you've got the council. Do we have to vote on this, or what do we do?
You're going to have to vote on it, and you got to restate what the end date is, because right now, in your, in your motion, it's when the governor provokes his emergency order, which it sounds like the direction of council is, you want to review it in, in January. So you're just substituting the end dates.
Is that what you're saying? All right, Bill, make a motion, please.
Wouldn't it be easier if the person who made the motion, the person who seconded it?
Just adopted it into the main motion?
And I'm sorry, I don't recall who made the motion. Who made the motion?
Yeah, I think it was me.
Joe, so.
So motion, motion B, we are going to review it what in?
Review it in January of 2022.
January what?
Do you want a date, want a date specific, or just the month?
I think if we said by the end of January 2022, we'll bring it back to council at one of those January council meetings.
My motion will be reviewed by, by, by the end of January of '22.
Okay.
That's good.
That'll work.
Okay, all in favor say yes.
We need a second.
Who's second?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're still smiling. Anybody you didn't, I didn't get here? Are you neutral? Okay. All right, all right, council, I know you probably don't want to talk, so are there any comments that you want to talk about tonight? Bill?
I do, I've got two, two things for, for the manager, based on tonight's conversations. I think we really need to have a renewed focus on the traffic in the area around Lower Buckeye, Cotton, Yuma, and Cotton. We heard a lot of complaints tonight about traffic and the flow of traffic, and people getting around. I think we need to take another look at that, and get proactive about solutions for preventing 173rd Avenue from becoming a cut-through. We can just have some look at that, based on these conversations tonight? That'll make sense? Okay, and then the second item is, today, Glendale, the City of Glendale announced annexation for land for another million-plus square feet of industrial at Cotton and Peoria. So I'd like to know where the nearest Glendale Fire Station is to that area, and all of the other area that they're annexing. area, and all of the other area that they're annexing along the 303 by distance. I don't want to know that it's at the corner of Walk and Don't Walk, I want to know how far away from that area it is, because this five miles from the city limits, if their nearest fire station is 10 miles away, the five-mile limit doesn't really help us as we get forward with that. So, I'd like to have that information. And then, third, is it possible to add Station 188 into those fire station locations, kind of with a little asterisk, once it's completed? So, we have an idea, this Lakin property might be about four, five miles from that fire station. And I think it might be helpful for us to know as we're looking forward, especially since we have already committed the funds to do it, and that kind of thing, so we know where we're at. Harrison and Citrus.
Any other comments? Any other needs?
I kind of already brought it up to you at one point, just around the airport, our Goodyear Airport, I just got back, we're trying to protect Luke Air Force Base, so just what that looks like around our Goodyear Airport for future potential there, so. And then I'd be curious to know how many people are at the roundup, if you have any. I know that wasn't our event, but I'm just curious.
So, Mayor, if I could, I was going to skip that, because it's so late, but since you asked, Vice Mayor, we, and it was not a city event, but I certainly, it was hosted at the Goodyear Ballpark. There was a crowd of more than 8,000 visitors, which included 1,300 in the VIP area. There were 54 food trucks, and there was a fireworks display to end the evening.
Must have been a success. Yeah. Any other comments? All right, this meeting's adjourned.